Clerk please file the rule.
Counselor Capone.
Yep.
Counselor Delasola.
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Here.
Counselor DePiero.
Here.
Counselor Mangon.
Here.
Counselor Matusky.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Politano.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon. Ten members present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Please stand and salute the flag. The audience, please stand and salute the flag.
.........................................................
Yeah. I'll read it.
Clerk, please read.
Dear Honorable Members, according to provisions of City Charter, Section 3-5B, I hereby call special meeting of the City Council as follows. July 25, 6:30 PM, to have a presentation on the Everett Square Planning Study. Cecilia Lee, Colorado D. Maria Mayor.
Rick, will you invite, uh, uh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Souza.
Mr. Souza up.
Motion made and seconded to have Mr. Souza before us to give the presentation. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, Counselors. Thank you. The purpose of this presentation is to give you an update of where we are on the Everett Square study. Thanks to this council, we've been, we received funding to conduct an Everett Square study, look at the Norwood Street area, Broadway, and to expand out even from the Old Everett High School down to the Roundabout as well. The purpose of tonight's, um, eve, uh, tonight's presentation is, again, to give an update and also to get some, some feedback as well. There's been a series of outreach that has been done within the community and to be additional outreach also done. And we're sort of at the middle point. And as promised, early on, I made a point that we'd have the consultants come and present. And that's the purpose of tonight's meeting, tonight's presentation. So thank you for, for having us here. For the introduction and the team that will be leading presentations are consultants from UTIL, Tim Love and Jessica Robertson. So if I may, I turn it over to them for this presentation.
You could come up before us, please. Thank you. Just state your names too, please, as well.
Uh, Tim Love.
Thank you.
Yeah. Say your name.
Jessica Robertson.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks for having us. We wanted to let you know some of the results of the surveys that we did in the square, which I think will be very instructive for you two and the, the good work that you do. We also want to talk about and clarify some of the issues that we're looking at in the study, which is fairly broad, to get maybe your input at the end of the presentation. Because we're looking at both traffic and parking, which I know that the councils grapples with all the time, many councils do, but also even the design of the streetscape and maybe some remedies that we can propose for reorganizing some of the streetscape and the curb alignments to make the pedestrian crossings safer and maybe make traffic flow better as well. And last, we want to talk about some public-private initiatives that might even impact private parcels on the ways that maybe a private development in some areas of the square could also help make it a more walkable, maybe more, more 24/7 square. So that was our mandate, and we'd like to talk about that a little bit. Again, my name is Tim Love. I'm the founding principal of UTIL, we're a planning and architecture firm located in downtown Crossing in Boston. Jessica Robertson, who's going to speak in a minute, is the project manager for this project. She's a transportation planner. In addition, we are working with a landscape architecture firm. Kaki Martin is representing that firm in, in the work that we're doing. A transportation planning firm, Jason Schreiber is the head of the work that we're doing for that part of the project. And Paul Scapicchio is helping us with some of the public engagement work from the Novus Group. So we're a fairly comprehensive team. In terms of our scope, we were asked to look at Everett Square from the Whittier School up to the Old High School in terms of the, the length of Broadway and then a couple of blocks back in either direction. I think the study area was partly defined to look at ways that maybe the neighborhoods could better interface with the square, too. The square is not just about people driving to the square, but also the way that people walk to do their everyday business from the immediate adjacent areas. So that's really what we've been looking at. Again, we've been looking at the square in terms of traffic flow. There's a hodgepodge of one-way and two-way streets that probably have evolved over time organically. We wanted to take a half a step back and make sure that was the right system for you. But we also wanted to look at how those streets converge in the square and maybe ways that with some minor changes, we could make maybe better open spaces or maybe a better situation for the businesses that are in the square. So with that, Jessica's going to talk about the survey so that you know what people think of Everett Square.
Alright, so, um, we did a survey earlier this spring, um, where we, we made an online version of the survey. We also talked to people at the polling places during the primary back in March. And so we asked them a bunch of different questions. We just have a, a small selection here. But as you can see from this one, you have people coming to Everett Square for lots of different reasons. And definitely errands and sort of everyday business is, is pretty high on the list. And then shopping and dining are also, um, you know, a decent number of people are coming for those reasons. So that's great. You want to have, you know, in a vibrant business district, you want to have people coming for lots of different reasons. We also asked, what do people like most about Everett Square? And definitely they, most of the, most of the answers had to do with the character and sort of it being a, the heart of the community. And so that's great as well. We also had, you know, convenience and, um, you know, the different amenities that are there. Like the library is a big destination as well. Um, in terms of improving Everett Square, although some people, you know, lots of people said the shops and the restaurants, 26% said the shops and the restaurants were the thing they liked most about Everett Square. We also had a lot of people saying, you know, they wanted to see more of that or different types of shops and restaurants. And then we also had, you know, various comments about, about traffic and parking and also just sort of making it more bustling and more of a, of a vibrant place to visit. So on the, onto the traffic and parking question, we have, as you all are, I'm sure, are very well aware, a lot of traffic in Everett Square, especially at rush hour, but also, you know, pretty much throughout the day, it's pretty heavy traffic. And unfortunately, that's something that's probably never going to change. You know, you could make Broadway 10 lanes wide in either direction. It would probably fill right back up again because you have limited ways to get across Everett because of all the one-way streets. And you have limited ways to get into some of the neighboring cities and towns. And then also Broadway is the easternmost north-south route that doesn't have a toll. So a lot of people are taking Broadway to avoid the tolls in the, on the other roads. So you pretty much have all of these different regional factors that are causing a lot of traffic to converge on Everett Square. Also, as Tim mentioned, you have a lot of one-way streets and streets that don't quite align. So the, the cross streets are, are not pointing directly at each other, which means that you have extra turning movements on Broadway. And so that slows traffic down a little bit, provides a little bit more friction. And then all of the one-ways means that sometimes you have to go a little bit out of your way to get where you're going. Or if you pass something, you might have to loop all the way back around to get to it. So that just creates a little bit of extra traffic, which can add up and, and add a lot to the traffic. Also, the one-way circulation can make it difficult sometimes to access parking. So if you, most of the off-street parking is off of Norwood Street. But if you're coming from the east, you're coming on Chelsea Street. Norwood is one way going the other way. So you would have to, you know, go a little bit out of your way to actually get to that parking. So MAPC, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, did a parking study for Everett Square last year. And they found that overall, there's actually plenty of parking. The capacity, 85% is sort of a benchmark where if you have higher than 85%, it's very difficult to find a space. But if you have less than 85%, there's pretty much always at least one space open on every block. So you show up and you can, you can see that on that block somewhere there's a spot and you can, you know, you can find something pretty easily. So although even the peak was around 75% at 11:00 AM during their study, it was still not, you know, not in sort of the danger zone of when you want to start being worried about how much parking there is. However, there were a lot of comments in the survey and observations from MAPC that the parking technology is out of date, the meters, a lot of them are broken, and that the enforcement doesn't, isn't necessarily rigorous. So that improving enforcement and improving the meter collection system will, will help with turnover a little bit. Because right now, you might have people parking for long periods of time in two-hour on-street spaces because there's no, there's no consequence for doing that. So the other main finding from MAPC study was related to what we've been looking at, which is just that a lot of the parking supply that is out there is just difficult to access because of the many one-way streets. So Tim is going to take it back to his floor.
Yeah, this is, uh, Tony knows that this is one of the things that we're focused on now with the plan, which is, is there a way to make some changes to the one-ways and two-ways and have better signs, more consistent signs for the parking that makes the parking easier to find? And so that perceptually, psychologically, it seems like there's plenty of parking in the square. I think for people who are visiting the square for the first or second time, finding parking is a little bit of a mystery. We want to make it much more transparent. And so that's one of the things that we're working on very carefully right now as part of the study. Getting out of your car now onto the street, we're also looking at the range of storefronts. Generally, the storefronts are attractive. They're, um, they're meant to appeal to people walking along the sidewalk. We're going to work with the city to create some guidelines, maybe to declutter some of the storefronts so you can see more of what's inside. This makes, uh, uh, shopping districts much more appealing to be able to see into the stores instead of having the glass all covered up. We also are looking at and evaluating the quality of the sidewalks and the streetscape itself, the sidewalk conditions, the relative location of crosswalks, whether they're convenient and easy to use. And we're also looking at, um, the, the condition of the trees. There are some areas of the square, this is a little bit hard to see this map, where there are nice stately street trees that add to the character of the square and other parts of the square where there aren't any street trees at all. Now certainly on Norwood Street, there isn't room for trees. But at least on Broadway, we'd like to get some more consistency as a plan moving forward so that it, it, when you see those street trees in, at Everett Square, it's one of the identifying characteristics of the square. We also want to think a little bit about the major open spaces in the square. Certainly the square itself, the space in front of the library. We've been working with Jay and Tony and the staff to think about configuring those spaces maybe in the way in the future so that they can be used for a wider variety of events, maybe across more seasons of the year. We also think that the, the open space in front of the old high school is an opportunity. It's a, it's a large piece of real estate. It is the anchor or bookend of the north end of the square. And so we're also thinking about what that might become, maybe with some benches and some places where people can actually sit. Interestingly, uh, uh, some of the parcels in our study area are publicly owned. Significantly, the old high school at the top of the map, the Whittier School at the south end, the square itself, some of the parking lots, and certainly the building that we're in now. And so one of our recommendations to the city as we continue with the plan is to come up with some recommendations for everything that you see in red because those are all city-owned properties. And there might be even some medium-term and long-term redevelopment ideas that might be considered by the council and by the mayor moving forward. This shows the city-owned parcels and the parcels owned by the churches and nonprofits. And then the, the mosaic of private parcel ownership to show that when you're doing this kind of plan, you need to have a plan that appeals to private property owners as well. Because both the city with the streetscape and city-owned parcels and the private property owners have to agree to a single vision. And so in our next round of outreach, we're hoping to, as we move the plan forward, develop some consensus around some of our ideas. So that's what we have for you this evening. Really an explanation of the scope, the issues that we're tackling. And I think the plan is to come back to the council when we get further along with the plan, right, Tony?
Yeah. Do you want to field questions, Tony?
So the, the intent of this tonight was just to give the council an update, but also in this being a public meeting, certainly welcome questions from, from any of the counselors about next steps.
I'm sure we have a few.
Give us some guidance as well.
Counsel, Councilman Mangon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tony, like I said, I know they had the, um, the Mass, they had that traffic study, or parking study, I should say, from the, uh, was it the, who's the?
The MAPC parking study?
MAPC, thank you. I know that this is here. Now that's currently, but we also know that, you know, just recently or not too long ago, we had the Bat yard over in, in Counselor McGlaughlin's area down off of Tremont Street. There's a lot of development going on down there. There's talk about, you know, more development going on along the Parkway with the old Holly Davidson. So certainly, so unless, which I know down on Ward 6, they don't have. I, I've been hearing that maybe the one in the Parkway might have some retail and some other stuff at the bottom, which I think makes sense, like station landing. But certainly for these other places that don't have any type of retail in the bottom level, at some point, these people are probably going to be drawn to the square, too, also, even, even more. So, and, um, and as if we continue to develop lower Broadway 99 down next to where the wind is, again, that could change it also, too. So I certainly would look at, even though they're saying this is kind of, you know, not bad right now, I really, really think seriously going forward, especially if we want to bring the type of businesses that we know we want, you know, in Everett Square and along Broadway, we certainly have to really seriously look at whether it's building multiple levels or something like that. But certainly, you know, I don't think what we have right now could be able to handle what we have going forward in the next five to 10 years, you know?
Your, your point's really well taken. This study, the MAPC parking study, was isolated solely to, to Everett Square. But there is a lot of merit of looking at parking citywide. And the last council, I believe it was the last council meeting did refer over, um, item to the planning board, which they're going to be looking at over the summer, looking at parking requirements citywide and how to accommodate residential, commercial, industrial as well. Try to find the, the right magic number for, because there's going to be, and there currently are new developments coming, or new developments that are taking place. So what requirements are for visitor parking versus commercial parking and so on.
Thank you.
Your points are well taken.
Thank you.
Counselor Love. Quick questions, uh, we have to discuss.
I, I do just have one question. Tony, keep it in mind that we, at some point hopefully in the future, will convert the Old Everett High School into a multi-purpose city facility building. How does the lawn on, in front of the Old Everett High School come into play with that? I know you guys discussed that, but does that stay as a green space in the front there if it does become a municipal building? Do you, have you thought about that?
I, I haven't thought a great length about it, but certainly the capturing that front as, as green space, it's important because it's really, it adds to the face of the building, so.
Yeah, I would definitely agree that trying to keep that.
Maintained or enhanced, yes.
Thank you, Tony.
Counselor Woman, Rosa DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Souza, I was thinking more of like a pedestrian-friendly area on Norwood Street. More widen the sidewalks, which I know that would take parking spaces away. And that's why I was thinking of parking garages to have that, uh, the parking that would be taken away from Norwood Street. We want to try to get more of, uh, people walking, pedestrian. Like you go to the north end, you see a little alleyway and behind the alleyway is this beautiful restaurant. You know what I'm saying? So I think by widening the sidewalks on Norwood Street, it gives the business people a, a better chance to rent to, uh, other areas like, you know, an ice cream parlor or a Starbucks or something, uh, to change the atmosphere of Everett Square.
Yeah, the, the next stage of our study, we're going to look specifically at proposals for widening the sidewalks on Norwood Street. That's part of our, our strategy. And I, just to comment on, on the, the parking issue, we're hoping in the plan to recommend ways to consolidate surface parking lots, but have those consolidated parking lots, the dimension allow for future structured parking at a time where it's necessary. So these are all great comments, all things that, that we're considering in the next steps. But, but absolutely, it's a very pedestrian-focused study. One more comment about the parking, I know that we've got to get through the, this agenda item quickly, is that it's a balance because if you, if you maximize parking, then it's no longer a charming square. So we want to make sure that the parking's hidden behind the shops, doesn't detract from the character. And, and that's what we're working very hard at, which is how can we maximize the parking without having a lot of surface parking lots that make it not very pedestrian-friendly? And so that's the trade-off that we're grappling with, I would say, right now.
Are you, are you all set, Counselor Woman?
Yes, thank you.
All right, Councilman Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Souza, are we going to get a package? I don't know, I haven't checked my meal box and, uh, on, on the survey that was done. I would like to see what the likes and dislikes of people on primary day was. And the other question I have to the gentleman, you know, the big brick building in Everett Square, used to be a brigands on the first floor, I'm sure you don't know that. But you can see that it's the only part that's utilized in that four-story building is the first floor. What have you, um, I mean, that takes a big chunk of the square. It's, to me, it's unsightly, but it probably could be fixed up. But what were your thoughts on that building?
We, we haven't drilled into development ideas for, for individual existing buildings, but part of the challenges with multi-story buildings like that is that they're very expensive to redevelop because you need an elevator and meet all of the building codes to put residential or office on the upper floors. It's a problem across the Commonwealth. We're working with Mass Development to maybe come up with a program to help finance some of those renovations. But we don't have any ideas specifically for that building or that site yet. But it's certainly one that we know and that we're looking at. That's, that's the next step of our plan, to look at the private property that, that, you know, all of those private parcels we had in the last line.
Well, that to me seems like a top priority in the square where it's a.
Just because, just because of where it's located.
You know, I don't want to put the, you know, if you can't put an elevator in and afford an elevator, maybe some other person could.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All set, Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Counselor Capone, and you'll be the last one because we're going to have to start our meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. With regards to private property, you know, this is a big issue for me. Private property is that, private. When you're doing the next leg of, of this and you're looking to enhance the square, I would imagine you would be approaching individual owners, getting their input, what they have to say, if they want to be involved, what they're looking to do, as opposed to kind of saying, this is what we're looking to do and pushing them along. Is that, is that accurate?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that I understand what we're trying to do, but I think that we need to be very sensitive to private property and, you know, let's embrace the owners and, and work together on it. I just want to make sure that's what we have.
Right, and, and I understand the, the sentiment of your question, too. We're going to do everything we can to first also capture the parcels that we own and maybe realign parking lots or create better frontage for the private developers. But I understand, I appreciate your question. I know where you're coming from. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I have no other questions.
All set, Counsel? Okay.
Make a motion to, uh, to adjourn.
Second.
Just informational, yes, and thank you.
Accept the information and adjourn.
Motion made to accept the information and adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, you have done so. You have a couple of minutes here. Yeah. This is the Triangle District here? Okay. Medium will come to water. Clerk will call the roll.
Council Capone.
Here.
Council Delasola.
Here.
Council DeFlorio.
Here.
Council DePiero.
Here.
Council Mangan.
Here.
Council Matusky.
Here.
Council McKinnon. Council McKinnon. Council McGlaughlin.
Here.
Council Apolitano.
Here.
Council Semenelli.
Here.
And President Hanlon.
Here.
Eleven members present, you have a quorum.
Quorum, President, I understand we've always saluted the flag.
We can suspend.
So before we start the proceedings, could I ask Council Matusky, Council McGlaughlin, and Council Mangan to please come to the podium?
I want to thank the members of the council.
Excuse me, would Ms. Chase also please come forward?
If I could, Mr. President, I'd also like to ask the Director of the Everett Housing Authority, Mr. Robert Carrero, and the Assistant Director, Mr. Stephen Kergo, to actually come forward. You know, there's a lot of boards in this city that people serve on for very minimal pay, as you all know. And Ms. Evelyn Chase, I had the privilege of serving on the Everett Housing Authority for, I think I was on the board for a little over two and a half years. But she has served this community and the residents of public housing, Glendale Towers, Golden Age Circle, Whitty Drive, and people on Section 8 vouchers. Very admirably, as a matter of fact, we'll all recall an incident at Glendale Towers where we had some issues. Ms. Chase secured, and we hired the best pest control person in the business with her recommendation and her, because she lived there. And not only being a board member and living in, she was a tenant member representing the tenants, all the tenants in all the public housing, is a very difficult position to hold because you actually live there. You come off the elevator, there's weeds in the back, somebody smoking in the elevator, or whatever the question might be. But she's done a great job. And this citation is co-sponsored by Councilman Mike Mangan, and who also served on the housing board, and he knows the strains and tribulations that come with that. And Councilman Mike McGlaughlin, who's a very dear friend of Ms. Chase. But I'd like to have the Director of our Housing Authority in Everett, Mr. Robert Carrero, just say a few words before we present the citation.
Thank you, Council Matusky, Mr. President, council members. Thank you for having me here tonight. I will be brief because I know that people like to be brief. I've spent a number of years, over 15 years, involved in the Everett Housing Authority as a board member and as executive director. We've had many board members come and go over that 15-year period. And pretty much everyone does their job and does it pretty well. But every once in a while, someone excels and rises to the top. Evelyn was on the board a little over five years, but she spent a lot of time doing her job. Everyone knows, you've probably all have been on boards at one time or another, whether it's in the city or wherever. And sometimes you spend a lot of time, sometimes you really don't. But Evelyn made it a point to make sure that everyone in her building, the 120 units we have next door to the office on Ferry Street, were well taken care of all of the time. She was getting calls and complaints from some of her fellow tenants all hours of the day, and every once in a while she would wake me up to share in that lovely time of day. But she didn't stop there. Her job was a tenant representative of the almost 300 elderly tenants that we take care of in the city of Everett. You know, she worked with the people at Golden Age Circle, which if anyone has been around there, it's a nice place to be, but not the best place to be. And then we have North Everett, the other elderly development, which they've been around a long time, all these places. And she's been there, she's met with the people, she's brought their concerns to the board, her fellow board members, to myself and Mr. Kergo. You know, it was a delight to have someone who actually had a personality, cared about the people that she was working with. And it was tough to see her go, but whatever accolades that you, this board so desires to give her, she's earned every one of it. And thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Kergo.
All set.
Well, I guess I'll read the citation at this point. Ms. Evelyn Chase, ladies and gentlemen. Excuse me. Thank you, Ms. Chase. She's a woman of not too many words, but she does speak a lot at the meetings, let me tell you.
Yeah, me too.
So on behalf of the mayor and the city council, I'd like to present this citation. Be it hereby known to all that the Everett City Council and his honor the mayor offers his sincerest congratulations to Ms. Evelyn Chase in recognition of your outstanding commitment to the city of Everett as the tenant representative of the Everett Housing Board from 2011 to 2016. The entire city government extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued good fortune. It's signed by the city clerk and it's sponsored by Michael McGlaughlin, Councilman, Councilman Mike Mangan, and myself. We appreciate what you've done in this community, Ms. Chase, and I wish you the best of luck in the future. And I know you'll continue to be active at Glendale Towers and throughout the city. Thank you very much. Thank you to the members too. And we have a gentleman like to take a photo, so, thank you, Mr. Brendan.
Mr. Chairman, can we request a five-minute recess, please?
Clerk will please read item number one on the agenda.
Oh, he did. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know that. Oh, okay. Item number one. The public hearing and petition from Light Tower Fiber Networks regarding fiber optic service. Fiber, no, Light Tower Fiber Networks hereby granted permission to construct a fiber optic service lateral from utility pole number 312 on Dexter Street to the 20 Broadway construction trailer to provide a temporary diverse internet service to Suffolk Construction for the build-out of Wink concito at 20 Broadway Everett Mass.
Mr. President?
Is the petition present? Please come forward and would you signify by your name and address, please?
Good evening. My name is Ryan McDonald from Axis Engineering out of Westboro, Massachusetts, here on behalf of Light Tower Fiber Networks.
Can you explain exactly what's going to be happening?
Okay, so we've been asked by Suffolk Construction to dig a diverse circuit lateral to their second construction trailer at 20 Broadway. It entails digging out of Dexter Street, crossing back into the city of Boston, crossing back into the city of Everett, and then again to the construction trailer on Horizon Way.
Thank you. Okay, Council McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the petitioner. Can you tell us what work hours you guys will be performing this?
We are very flexible. Last time we did a dig in the same area, we were requested to work from the hours of 7:00 PM to 3:00 AM in the morning, which we could accommodate if that's all right with you.
Then that's exactly my question was. I know you guys have done this previously for the first trailer, and my question was, could we follow the same protocol so that there's less congestion in that area? All of my colleagues know how bad that can get down that area. So if we could follow that same protocol, I would strongly support the petition tonight. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Council Delasola.
You know approximately how long this would take?
This one's a little longer. I'm saying five days at the most.
Okay, maybe like we just said the same hours as the last job. All right, thank you.
Council Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. McDonald, you've done work already on Broadway, is that it?
Yes.
Okay, that seems to be going pretty smoothly. But in recent weeks, we've been hearing about police details being smashed into, run over, and was a policeman killed in Medford, I believe it was.
Okay.
So you'll have all the proper cones and all that there?
Yes, we have a fully engineered traffic management.
And how many police officers actually will be on this?
Last time we did this dig, on the plan it shows one police officer, but you requested additional police officers and for us to work with the police department about the details.
If you need more, you'll get more. Because it's, you know, it's pretty heavy-duty traffic down there, and I'd like to see more than one, to be honest with you.
Sure, I believe they had two last time.
Two?
Yep.
And it's only five days, so. And I noticed, I know that we're not on number two, but it's the same company.
Yep.
So you'll have police at each location?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Council, do you have a question? Any further questions? Thank you very much for appearing. Thank you. Okay. Such matters before you.
He has another piece coming up, so you can sit.
Oh, I know, just for that one there. Such matters before you.
Favorable action on the motion.
Oh, that's right too, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, this is a public hearing. We will conduct the public hearing asking if any audience in favor of this project. I will ask three times, anyone in the audience in favor of this project? Is anyone in the audience in favor of this project? Is there anyone in the audience in favor of this project? Now declare that part of the hearing closed. Is anyone in the audience opposed to this project? Is anyone in the audience opposed to this project? Is anyone in the audience opposed to this project? And now declare that part of the public hearing closed. Counselors?
Favorable action.
Motion made, second favorable action, any further discussion? Yes, sir.
With the work hours in place, correct, for 7:00 PM to 3:00 AM?
Seven to three?
7:00 PM to 3:00 AM.
7:00 AM?
7:00 PM.
Seven, 7:00 PM?
Yep, till 3:00 AM.
Till 3:00 AM?
Yes.
That's the working hours?
That's what they did previously, and it worked out well.
Michael, you record that? Okay. Motion for favorable action with the working hours to be 7:00 PM to 3:00 AM. All in favor? Signify by saying aye. Roll call.
No, not for the amendment. No, you're right, not for the amendment. On the amendment, it's got to be voiced, okay?
Okay, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Okay, amendment is passed, all in favor of the petition, signify by answering the roll.
Council Capone.
Yes.
Council Delasola.
Yes.
Council DeFlorio.
Yes.
Council DePiero.
Yes.
Council Mangan.
Yes.
Council Matusky.
Yes.
Council McKinnon.
Yes.
Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Apolitano.
Yes.
Council Semenelli.
Yes.
Council Hanlon.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, you have granted the petition. Clerk will need the next item on the agenda.
I don't know, Matusky, order a petition from Light Tower Fiber Networks to construct a fiber optic service to 3 Charlton Street.
That's it?
Yeah.
We don't want to read this one, okay. The gentleman here is before us, would you please explain exactly what you're going to be doing there?
Okay, we'd like to construct a lateral between electric manhole number 307 and electric manhole 668. This is for continuity between the two manholes. We already have continuity to the site. We just need to, if we place a new duct to get a cable in between these two manholes on Broadway.
Okay. Yes, Council McGlaughlin.
The distance is in that, the two manholes?
I think it, I think it was.
Council McGlaughlin.
Forty-eight feet, I think.
Okay.
Got to be exact. Yes, I don't know if it's a big job or a small job, I'm just curious.
It's a small job, it's, I believe it's 30, 38 feet.
Okay.
Roughly.
A day and a half?
A day and a half, two days, I would say mostly, yeah.
All right, and that's going to be same hours as the other job?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
All set, all set. Any further questions? If there's, may I ask a question from the chair? No further. I read the article, I mean, the information that you sent with it.
Yep.
And as opposed to the first one, which there was nothing attached to it, but the second one is quite a massive papers. I was, I want to know where you're going to start those fiber optics from? Where are you getting the original fiber optic from? Where's this starting?
We have, our fiber optics are on the pole lines for the first dig. For the first dig, they are on the pole lines at Dexter Street. So we'll be coming from our backbone at Dexter Street.
What's Dexter Street?
On Dexter Street. The second dig in between the two manholes, our equipment is actually located in the electric manhole system. So we basically have a path from where our splice point is to the site, but through rodent and rope and all that, we notice that there's no pathway between these two manholes. So, you know, inevitably, we have to dig between the two manholes, repair the conduit system, and to be able to place our cable.
You must have reviewed Everett for fiber optics?
I'm sorry, say it again?
Were you aware of any other fiber optics in the city of Everett?
Yeah, there's Verizon and there's Comcast.
Motion for favorable action with the working hours to be 7:00 p.m. to 3:00 a.m. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Sir, would you please identify yourself and your address?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Brian Grossman. I'm an attorney with Anderson &amp; Krieger. My office address is One Canal Park, Suite 200, Cambridge, Massachusetts, 02141.
Please explain the petition, I mean, your petition.
Sure. My client is Mobility. Mobility is constructing, is a competitive local exchange carrier licensed by the Department of Public Utilities. They're a competitive local exchange carrier, actually licensed in all 50 states. They are constructing a hybrid transport network. They are not a personal wireless service provider or commercial mobile radio service provider. They are a provider of a backhaul transport network, very similar to what Comcast would do with their construction, what fiber companies do with theirs. They move data on behalf of clients. Their technology can be utilized by a number of different types of providers. Mobile radio services or PCS providers can utilize their services, but really, they provide service to anyone who needs to move data. And they do it, like I said, through the, through this hybrid backhaul network. And so in order to, and other clients could be, we've all heard the term Internet of Things, where you have interconnected devices, and you've heard of refrigerators now that can send you a text and tell you you're out of milk. They need a network, and they may not necessarily utilize a personal wireless service provider. They are something that needs to be connected. You have driverless cars, you have other commercial fleet-type vehicles that need to be connected to a transport network. Mobility can provide services to all of those different types. So what Mobility has proposed is a new utility pole located the corner of Glendale Place and Ferry Street. They do have a cylindrical antenna at the top, it's omnidirectional. There are other appurtenances that would be attached to the wooden utility pole, including a radio frequency filter, an IR relay, surge protector, GPS antenna, there's a radio head, there is a power box, and because it's national grid, there'd most likely be a power meter at the bottom of the, of the utility pole. The electric would be run from an existing manhole about 35 feet away.
Thank you. Counsel Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Grossman, isn't there a hearing tonight in the planning board regarding this location?
I am not aware of one. My client, I don't think my client's aware of one either.
Well, the Director of the Housing Act, well, Glendale Towers is actually next door to Glendale Place, am I right?
Yes.
And, well, he showed me a public hearing notice that, what's the, is the company Mobiliti...
Mobility, yes.
But it spelt a little different.
Yes, it's M-O-B-I-L-I-T-I-E.
Yeah, there's something going on in the planning board tonight regarding this company.
Okay.
You know, so I just want to make that clear that I'm, you know, and you mentioned it to me. And this, this equipment be on top of the pole?
The cylindrical antenna's at the top of the pole, the other equipment is located in various points, generally between the seven and a half to 17-foot range, and there are a couple more towards the top of the pole.
And that street is a private way, is that my understanding?
I don't know.
No, I know.
Glendale Place may be, certainly Ferry Street's.
Is that where the pole's going to be?
The pole's on Ferry Street.
The pole be on Ferry? It'll be on Ferry. Well, Glendale Place, to my knowledge, is a private way. Maybe I'm wrong. I was just informed of that tonight, so... My question is, if you're looking for something in the planning board and you don't know about it, and you're also looking for something tonight, the Assistant City Clerk's actually going to take a walk and find out, I think that's what he went to do. But, you know, my concern is that, you know, we had other companies before us, Mr. President, our poles can only take so much. We've got double poles, and then, do you have any other equipment in Everett other than this location that's going to?
No, these are, this is the, these are the first two petitions. We do have other petitions.
Okay, well, my experience and the experience of the city council is that we have double poles now, and there's three, four, five, six parties involved with the removal of the pole, uh, the, in order to make it a one-pole system, we've got to go through all kinds of red tape. So is your company willing to, you know, step forward and, you know, if there is a problem, you'd come down and take care of the equipment immediately, I would imagine, right? Everybody says that, Verizon and, but the truth of the matter is, I have some questions. It's a private way. I know the location very well, I grew up in that area. I'm a little, Ferry Street is being done over now. I hate to see a bunch of equipment on top of poles. It's next to Glendale Towers. The Assistant Clerk just came by, I don't know. Well, I was showing...
Nothing there.
Is the planning board meeting tonight, Mr. President?
They're meeting, but there's nothing on their agenda regarding Mobility.
It may have been this piece of business that was here tonight, but my question is, it's a private way, and I don't know if we can actually put something like this on a pole close to a private way.
It's near Glendale Place, but it's on Ferry Street.
Right, and Ferry Street is being done over?
That's going to be on Ferry Street, Counselor.
Yeah, I understand that. I don't think I like the concept. I'm going to vote against it. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel Delasola?
Good evening. A couple of questions. How big is this antenna?
You're next.
Is it, it's going to go on a pole? Is it, I'm going to drive down the street and see this big giant antenna hanging off the pole? Like, we have no pictures of this or not, or nothing.
The antenna's, I don't know if you, in your packet, received plans or not, but the antenna itself is just sort of three feet high, and it's about 4.7 inches in diameter, so almost five inches in diameter. I do have... This is a picture of an existing, similar, Mobility pole with similar equipment.
Okay, now, what is, are the residents going to benefit from this? Everett, what is this actually doing to the residents of Everett? Is it?
So it will, as I said, it will provide hybrid transport services, so it will move and what they call provide backhaul services and move data services for any provider that requires those types of services. And so those are, those are Mobility's direct customers, they don't, they're not a personal wireless service provider, so they're not a, an AT&amp;T or Verizon where they're reselling or selling service direct to the public. But for those members of the public that subscribe to services that utilize Mobility's network, they will realize benefit.
Something to get an antenna with these big things hanging off, but going by the picture, that's fine, that's fine for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Attorney Grossman. The, I just saw the photo of the, of the antenna. Do you, I guess, in practice, is it at the highest point of the pole?
Yes.
That's where you're located?
It goes at the top.
And some of the questions were already asked and answered for me, but I understand that the backhaul transports to move data for providers, et cetera, it's, I would imagine, it's income generating? It's not, it's not free?
To Mobility, yes.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, all right, thank you very much. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for clerical reasons, I know, just at some point, once we, we actually vote on this either way, it just should be amended because it's, which mentioned with Glendale Place and Ferry Street and Nichols Street? There is, yeah, there's no need to amend it because on the actual petition, it is correct. So we don't have to. That's just a mistake on that. On the actual piece, it says Glendale Place and Ferry Street, on Ferry Street. Okay. So we don't need to amend it. The actual petition reads correctly. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel. Follow him.
Thank you. This antenna, now, is this, is this a transmitter or receiver? Is this transmitting data out into the, into the, over the, over the community, or is it receiving data that's coming in?
It can transmit and receive.
But what is the, what's the percentage use? Excuse me. Will it be functioning in a transceiver mode the majority of the time?
It depends on what the network need is. So if there's a device that is, really only needs to communicate from it to the network to have data sent out and routed, then it would do that. But if that's a two-way device that can receive something like, like a, an auto-drive car, or a commercial fleet vehicle where there is maybe communication going back and forth, then the antenna would provide both functions.
All right, thank you.
So I can't give you a percentage, because it would be dependent on what the particular use is.
Is this low, low, low-yield energy transmissions, or?
Yes, and it does comply with FCC regulations with regard to emissions.
All right, great, thank you.
Through you, Mr. President, to petitioner. Why this location versus anything else in the city of Everett?
As I said, it's based on projected customer need, and, and some of the clients that Mobility would be working with have identified this area as a need, and certainly, as I said, we do have other locations in Everett that we are looking at, and as I said, two, I think are on the August agenda as well. With the population density of Everett, it's not surprising that, you know, there's, there's backhaul need in a number of areas of the city.
But is it flexible to be able to move a block one way or another? Because I agree with Counsel Matusky, Glendale Place and Ferry Street is a tight na, well, corner. There's, I believe, a convenience store in the corner, and it's, it's tight, Glendale Place, which is a private way, is tight as it is. Now you're going to put this pole in front of that convenience store on that corner. Can we move it a block one way or another, which makes it a more easier transition, because it is tight in that corner?
It is very difficult to move these. They are set up in a, in a precise way in terms of providing the necessary communication. So I couldn't commit to being able to move it tonight. I would have, we would have to talk to the, to the network services folks. But typically, it's very tight in terms of where they need to be located, because there are such effectively low-power and servicing, a very specific, small area.
Okay, and I do agree with Counsel Matusky, which is that it is a tight corner. You have parking on one side, that side of the Glendale Place, and it's, it just is, it's tight, so I would like to see if we could potentially move it, but I'll yield the floor to my colleagues.
I could be wrong. Isn't the convenience store on the other side of Glendale Place?
Okay, so you're going in front of the Everett House and Authority building, that corner of Glendale Place? See, again, I've never seen these plans, so I can't, I couldn't tell, I apologize.
I apologize, I thought, I thought you had plans in your mind.
Okay, well, that, that changes it a little bit. I thought, I thought it was on the other corner where the convenience store is, and I apologize for not having those plans previously to be able to discuss that, sorry.
Counsel McKinnon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the guest. Do you have any of these poles in other populated areas, or is that, because we have an elderly center that's there, and it's a very heavy populated area, what are, and what are the transmissions of megahertz that are going to be coming in and out of this? Do you have that with you, that data?
Mobility is in the process of building out its network in Massachusetts. It has a number of installations where it started, originally in California in the Southwest. We're currently building out, we're working on a number of communities, Salem, Cambridge, here, city of Boston as well. In terms of...
I mean, do you have any, maybe, medical adverse reaction to the type of poles that you're going to be putting up? Is there anything like that that's reported?
It, it will comply with FCC regulations with regard to emissions. Generally, the, the operating powers per sector, the frequency is 2,500 megahertz. The power's about 20 watts with one transmitter. At ground level, the percentage of the FCC exposure limit to the public would be less than 0.6 percent.
So it's 0.6?
0.6. That's 0.6 percent of the FCC allowed limit.
Of the allowed?
Correct.
Okay.
And on a horizontal plane with it at 12 feet away, you're talking less than 5 percent, and that's if you run the same horizontal, horizontal plane, which in this case isn't possible.
Now, where, what other locations were you looking at in Everett?
Well, we have the other one on, on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
And to keep my file smaller, I actually took the other two folders out.
That's fine.
So I apologize, I don't know, although the Assistant City, I think the Assistant City Clerk maybe actually answered my question.
Do you have that?
It's Mohan and Chisholm, and Avon and Maine would be the other two.
They're picking on my neighborhood, all right.
Yeah, that, I, I got the email on Friday, that's why I didn't make on the agenda. Thank you.
So, okay, so those would be the four locations, and then, what other, I mean, you, you mentioned another group of cities that you're doing this in. Do you do that in other populated areas, and has there been any repercussion from that?
I mean, all of the areas are slightly different.
Well-populated.
But, I mean, certainly Cambridge and Boston are highly populated. Boston has a number of facilities similar to this that aren't Mobility. I think Boston has agreements with four, maybe five, other companies that have built out similar-type networks throughout the city. Cambridge is very similar. So, I mean, there's, this is one of the new tools in the toolbox.
Sure.
You won't see traditional sites go away completely, but this is just another tool in the toolbox for providers to meet subscriber demand or customer demand for various types of services.
Now, back to my colleague from Ward One. We've been having terrible problems with double polling here. They actually made state legislation over it, so what we need to know is some assurance from you, if we do vote for this tonight, that if anything were to go wrong, if we need that removed, so we can remove a pole, or what do we have to do, you'll do that.
And certainly...
Will your company that you're representing right now abide by that rule in Everett? To get here, to actually take their, you know, their antenna down or whatever? Because we've had that situation before, before us, and we had to actually put it almost into state legislation to do something about it, so...
I mean, certainly, one, Mobility would be the only, anything on the, on this proposed...
There won't be anything else on that poll?
No, there's nothing, there's nothing else proposed on it.
Okay. So if we would need that moved, they would come, remove it?
Well, I mean, they'd be providing a service, and removing the pole would be removing that service, one of the...
Say if there was a situation that arise, that we needed it moved, would we, we would 0.6. That's 0.6 percent of the FCC allowed limit.
Of the allowed?
Correct.
Okay.
And on a horizontal plane with it at 12 feet away, you're talking less than 5 percent. And that's if you run the same horizontal, horizontal plane, which in this case isn't possible.
Now, where, what other locations were you looking at in Everett?
Well, we have the other one on, on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
And to keep my file smaller, I actually took the other two folders out.
That's fine.
So I apologize. I don't know, although the Assistant City, I think the Assistant City Clerk maybe actually answered my question.
Do you have that?
It's Mohan and Chisholm, and Avon and Main would be the other two.
They're picking on my neighborhood, all right.
Yeah, that, I got the email on Friday. That's why I didn't make on the agenda.
Thank you.
So, okay, so those would be the four locations. And then what other, I mean, you mentioned another group of cities that you're doing this in. Do you do that in other populated areas, and has there been any repercussion from that, or?
I mean, all of the areas are slightly different, but, but, I mean, certainly Cambridge and Boston are highly populated. Boston has a number of facilities similar to this that aren't mobility. I think Boston has agreements with four, maybe five, other companies that have built out similar-type networks throughout the city. Cambridge is very similar. So, I mean, there's, this is one of the new tools in the toolbox.
Sure.
You won't see traditional sites go away completely, but this is just another tool in the toolbox for providers to meet subscriber demand or customer demand for various types of services.
Now, back to my colleague from Ward One. We, we've been having terrible problems with double polling here. They actually made state legislation over it. So what we need to know is some assurance from you. If we do vote for this tonight, that if anything were to go wrong, if we need that removed, so we can remove a poll, or what do we have to do, you'll do that. Will your company that you're representing right now abide by that rule in Everett, to get here, to actually take their, you know, their antenna down or whatever? Because we've had that situation before, before us, and we had to actually put it almost into state legislation to do something about it. So...
I mean, certainly, one, mobility would be the only, anything on the, on this proposed...
There won't be anything else on that poll?
No, there's nothing, there's nothing else proposed on it. So the...
So if we would need that moved, they would come, remove it?
Well, I mean, they'd be providing a service, and removing the pole would be removing that service, one of the...
Say if there was a situation that arises, that we needed it moved, would we, we would be okay to ask and get that done in a rapid motion here, or would we be waiting for years and years like we've done before?
I, I would say in terms of dealing with mobility, since they, they are a competitive local exchange carrier, they are a utility, but they are certainly not the size of, you know, Verizon Landline or Comcast. So they're more, a little more fleet afoot. They would certainly work with the community. As I said, they're, they're going to be providing a service that people are going to be, and customers are going to be expecting. And so removing that pole without replacing it or being able to...
Put it in a different location.
Put it in another location that will meet the need would be problematic, but mobility would absolutely, you know, work with the community, wants to be a good corporate citizen, and make sure that, you know, if there's an emergency or if something needs to happen, they would certainly work with you.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Simonelli, to my right, Mr. Grossman, would like to know what benefit, or what taxes would your company that you represent be paying to the City of Everett? What benefit, in other words, would the City of Everett get by granting you this, this easement?
You know, issues of, of taxes or other payments in the taxes, I would leave to the successor and the tax collector. I'm not sure what other, you know, what payments or taxes are made by other utilities. We would expect to be treated similarly.
You have no idea what the payment might be?
I do not. Typically, we, in, in a lot of instances, we haven't been asked to, to make a tax payment or payment in the taxes, that I'm aware of.
Well, that's interesting to me. I mean, Councilman Simonelli, Mr. Grossman can't express himself verbally at this time. But my question now is, what benefit do we get out of granting these, these pole extensions? I really don't know, you know, and then nothing, no reflection on you, Mr. Grossman, but what are the benefits? I mean, I know that you must have customers in Everett, is that it? You know, what do, you know, a pole is a, really an unsightly thing. Okay, we got an elderly building in front of the, with his poles going to be. You know, and, and the street is being completely done over, as you probably, if you went down and looked at the location. And I did look at the photo, and if that's the only thing that's going to be on it, why don't you go to a private building that's a little higher up or something and, and go that route? Why wouldn't you do that?
Because as with other, other utilities, the competitive local exchange carrier locates in its, its utility infrastructure in the right of way.
So that connects to the electric, is that it, so forth?
Well, I mean, it needs electric to, to function, but it will, instead of using something like fiber, you know, to run back to a specific area, it will do the backhaul as well, wirelessly.
Yeah, you know something? The more I think about the whole affair, the more puzzled I am. I know that on top of Glendale Towers, Mr. Hamlin, President Hamlin, there are, there are many antenna devices, want to call them that. And those people actually pay the Housing Authority not a lot of money, but they do pay money. And it's, you know, at least it's something. And the Everett Housing Authority gets that. I do know that much. And this is only, not even a stone's throw away. Why wouldn't your company contact? I don't get it. This is puzzling to me.
There will be taxes on it. There, there will be taxes.
On the pole, yeah. I'm just curious to how much it is. But I don't know. It just seems, something doesn't seem right in Denmark to me on this. And I'm not going to vote in favor. Mr. Grossman, you presented yourself very nicely tonight, and there's just something doesn't seem right. And just as my, my own point of view, Mr. President, we have got to start taking, you know the problems that we have in this city with poles. We've got to take, take a stand at some point. Nobody, Verizon, you saw what they've done in the past, and I just don't, we don't have cooperation, Mr. Grossman, from other companies. So you're getting the, the burnt end of the stick here. So I apologize for my opinion, but I'm not going to vote for it. Thank you.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Sorry, Mr. President. I'm going to yield the floor to my colleague.
Oh, Counselor Nagin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I live right by Walnut Street. I live right across the street from there, and so I'm certainly familiar with that. Glendale Tower is right at the bottom of my street. So we were just looking at the, on the Google Maps, and what you explained to us, there's no existing light pole there. There's one in front of the store. So I don't know, it says to an existing pole, so I don't know where that light pole is.
No, it's a new wood pole.
It doesn't say to, it says, it says seeking permission to install backhaul transport equipment on light pole. So you're going to put up a light pole?
No, it's, it's not a light pole. It's a new wood pole.
Okay. Well, I'm just reading what it says here.
Okay.
It says permission to install backhaul transport equipment on light pole north of intersection of Glendale Pace, excuse me, Glendale Place and Ferry Street. So there's something wrong here. So I, like I said, I kind of agree with Counselor Matusky, whether we put this into committee or something, because this thing says a light pole. If we look, we have the pictures right here. There's no light pole.
If, if...
It says equipment on light pole north of intersection. With the area he just showed us on that map, there's no pole there.
Let me get you the actual description of it. Okay, well...
On the petition that was sent in your package, it read, petitioner proposes to install backhaul transport equipment on a proposed concrete light pole in the right-of-way located north of the intersection of Glendale Place and Ferry Street on Ferry Street.
So they want to build on a, they want to construct a concrete pole there?
Yes.
Okay, that's different than what we have here. So I think, my, I mean, I would certainly just think we should go into committee with this, because I think this is, this certainly needs more discussion. That's just my opinion. But I can't vote for it as it is.
I sent the whole package. Okay.
Any further, Counselor Napolitano?
Yeah, if I, if I could, and if the clerk could clarify this up for us. I mean, you have the actual orders and the, and what's being submitted, right?
Right.
This is not the orders on the agenda. This is just a summary for our benefit.
That's true.
So we should not get hung up on the wording, if I am understanding this correctly, in the summary, because this is just a summary to get the information into a small paragraph to get a, so the general public get a basic idea. But this is, this is in no way, shape, or form the specifics, correct?
Right.
Okay. And second, if I could also clear this up, any vendor, any company that comes in and constructs any type of pole or apparatus in the city of Everett pays taxes and fees to the city of Everett as a result of that. Is that correct in most cases?
Yes.
So they pay a fee to do the work, and then they're paying taxes for the ongoing.
That's right.
So this is not anybody, we're not giving anything away. People are not getting anything free. Okay? I didn't say what I'm, just clarif, no, I'm talking, all due respect, if I could through the chair, I would be allowed to glance at all of my colleagues when I make a point. Thank you. Okay? I'm not directing anything at any one individual. I'm just trying to clear up the issue so as not to create a misconception or misunderstanding to the general public who's watching this material, who does not have access to the materials that we were sent. Okay? And that's all I'm, that's the only point I'm trying to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nagin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly respect Counselor Napolitano's point there, but again, it's in my neighborhood. It's at the bottom of the street. It's a congested area as it is already. To stick another pole down there, okay, for the benefit of, it's probably, probably pittance for tax dollars. I mean, I'm not against this, but why can't we put it on some other existing pole somewhere? That's my whole thing. Why do we have to put, build to construct another whole pole there to put, put this thing on there? I just don't think. I mean, I know we're in the process, we're doing Ferry Street over. There's going to be all new lighting and everything else going on there. I mean, is this going to mesh with the vision that we have of all Ferry Street with everything? I mean, and like I said, I don't think it's, I don't think it's the right thing to do. Like I said, and I understand that the clerk has it as a thing, but when the public does come up here, Mr. President, this is what they have, okay? This is what they have. If somebody comes up here, people are sitting in the council chambers, this is what they have in front of them. So they're going by what they believe this is, this is to be true. So that's, just want to clarify that. But I can't, as it currently exists, I, we have Counselor Matusky. I cannot vote for this.
Counselor, Counselor Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't want to dwell on this, but you know, this is a serious issue in our community. We are drafting right now a double pole ordinance and so forth. Now, I may not be the smartest guy on this board, but this is a wooden pole, okay? This is wood. This is a telephone pole, sir. The ordinance says concrete. There's a difference between concrete and that pole, wouldn't you say?
There, there is, and, and I heard the clerk read it, and if necessary, we'll amend. I don't know why it says concrete. I want to be very clear. The plan that we have and what I've presented is correct, that it is a wood, is a wood pole. If we need to amend the proposed order, or we need to amend the application, we move to do that. And I certainly didn't, I know when, when I started the presentation, I said wood pole.
I know you did. And, but that's not what the clerk said.
Didn't mean to mislead anyone. It is, it is a wood pole that is being proposed.
However, we've got some mistakes in your whole proposal here. The location, we're not, we're concerned it, there's elderly people there. Put it on top of a building. Your company should seek a, a high-rise building somewhere in the same area. It's only a couple of feet away, and people are paying the Housing Authority. Mr. President, this is not what I consider professional. No offense to this gentleman. I want to make that perfectly clear. But I, for one, am not going to grant any more licenses for things on top of poles all over this community. With, as Councilman Nagin said, we're doing Ferry Street over, sir, for millions of dollars, and inconveniences to the people that live there. And to put a possible concrete or a wooden pole with just your business on it is not worth it to me. I don't even know what you pay for taxes. But, Mr. President, let's call for the question. If you want to send it to committee, I'm not in favor of that, by the way. I just want to vote no on the whole proposal. That's my feeling. So I call for the question. Thank you.
I have, before you made that motion, I had Councilman McGlaughlin. After that, we, we'll get, well, grant that.
I have one quick question. I'm going to not deliberate on this. Looking at Google Maps, there is an aluminum pole in front about 150 feet away from where you are proposing. Can you attach it to the aluminum light pole that's about 150 feet away from your existing, your, your petition?
In some cases, that's possible. The aluminum pole in this case, the aluminum street pole in this case would be too short.
Okay. That, that's, that's my question.
We do have similar applications in other places where that solution would work or replacing that pole would work. Here, it's too short.
Okay. Thank you.
Have any further discussions? Thank you very much for appearing, sir. We have a public hearing coming up, so, you can stay if the question's for you. I'm going to ask the audience if there's anyone in favor of this petition three times. Is there anyone in favor of this petition? Is there anyone in favor of this petition being granted? Is there anyone in favor of this petition? I'll close that part of the public hearing. Is there any opposed to, to this petition? Yes, sir. Please come up, sir. Please sit at the other chair. Please state your name and address, sir.
Good evening, Mr. President. My name is Matteo Gallo, and I'm calling, I am here because I did get notified in the mail that what was discussed, but I do not believe that this address has come up unless I did not hear it. I own a building in the corner of Nichols Street and Lawrence Street.
That's not tonight. No, that, that's, that's a misprint over there. I'm sorry, sir. That's coming up at our next meeting, though.
Nope.
Huh? Oh, the next piece. No, I'm sorry. Next, next one, next one.
Don't leave.
Oh, that's the next one right here. Okay. So you can sit there, but we're not talking about that one right now, okay?
Thank you.
Anyone else in favor? Huh? Anyone else in, opposed to this petition? Is there anyone else opposed to this petition? I now declare that part of the public hearing closed. The matter's before you, gentlemen and ladies. Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that there were some, some very valid points that were raised. There is some confusion at, at least. I think that it would be best served to refer this to business community development, take a better look at it, invite the petitioner, and invite someone from the assessors board as well, so we can figure out exactly what monetary benefit there might be to the community.
What, what committee? What committee?
Mr. President, on that motion?
Counselor Matusky?
Thank you. My colleagues on the council, you can see that this is a, as I said, no reflection on this company or this gentleman here. We've got to start taking a stand here in this community. I ask you to vote no on this petition. There's, there's wording wrong, concrete. I don't need, we're in summer session now. I've been up here more than I was in the wintertime, okay? Let's be honest about sending stuff to committee. This is an ill-fated proposal. Let this company go to a high-rise and pay some money for rent, and put it on top of buildings like they do in other locations. We are doing Ferry Street over. It's been a lot of work for the neighborhood to put a pole there, concrete, whether it's concrete or wooden, is not in for this one single company. It doesn't make sense to me. So I'm prepared to vote no. If you want to send it to committee, that's your choice. Thank you.
Okay. Motion for, refer to committee and, and a seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor referring to committee? All opposed?
All opposed.
And then those have it. Something matters before you.
Motion made in second for favorable action.
Counselor, just make a motion for favorable action. Motion made with second? Motion made in second for favorable action. Clerk will call the roll, please.
Counselor Capone?
No.
Counselor Dal Sola?
No.
Counselor Florio?
No.
Counselor DePiero?
No.
Counselor Nagin?
No.
Counselor Matusky?
No.
Counselor McKinnon?
No.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
No.
Counselor Simonelli?
No.
Counselor Hamlin?
Yes.
One yay, ten days, Mr. President.
The petition has not been granted. Will the clerk please read them? Item number four on the agenda, and you gentlemen can stay right where you are.
Item number four is a petition seeking to install equipment a right-of-way located north of the intersection Nichols Street and Lawrence Street. Petition proposes to install backhaul transport equipment on proposed concrete light pole in the right-of-way located north of the intersection of Nichols Street and Lawrence Street on Nichols Street with the electricity connection, and it gives the latitude, longitude, location approximately as shown on plan, attached as Exhibit A.
Okay. Will the petitioner please, for the record, please identify herself again and your address?
My apologies. Brian Grossman, Anderson and Krieger, outside counsel for the applicant mobility. My address is One Canal Park, Suite 200, Cambridge, Massachusetts, 02141.
Okay. And would you please explain the petition?
Sure. Very similar to the prior petition, mobility proposes a wood utility pole, a new wood utility pole. Again, with a cylindrical antenna at the top, along with other appurtenances, including a RF filter, UE relay, radio hood with GPS antenna, backhaul enclosure, AC distribution box and meter. Power would be brought to the facility by overhead wire from a point across the street from an existing location. And again, the need for mobility as a competitive local exchange carrier is to provide for the hybrid transport network.
Thank you. Subtle matter, if we're, Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the invited guests. You can see what the sentiment is of the board, so this would be an opportunity, if you could explain in a very real and tangible way, if there is any benefit whatsoever to the residents of Everett. Other than that, I, I think that the fate of this one is going to follow the prior.
Look, I, I want to be clear in terms of, of benefit. The, you know, mobility doesn't provide a direct service like a Verizon or an AT&amp;T. What it does very much like, you know, an RCN or a Comcast, even if you're not using their services, if you're subscribing to a service that utilizes their backhaul network, the fact that you think you're getting a benefit from Company A doesn't mean that Comcast building out its network, or its fiber, or a company built like Fiber Tower before, building out its fiber network is not benefiting you. Subscriber, users, including residents and visitors to the city of Everett and businesses within the city of Everett, are consuming data services at an ever-increasing rate. It's happening across the country. It's happening across the world. In order for those services to which they are subscribing to meet their demand, whether it's streaming Netflix, whether it's an autonomous car, whether it's fleet vehicles, whether it's linked internet devices of any sort. As I said, like the example I used before was the, the connected refrigerator that sends you a text that you need to buy milk, or you're out of bangs. Those are advances that are, that are here and more that are coming. The residents of Everett, the residents of Massachusetts, the residents of the United States want and need those services. They are demanding it from their providers. They are demanding it from their new devices. They are demanding it from their new devices, and they want them to work. In order for them to work, you need networks, various, you need networks like what mobility is building out to, in, in order to provide those kinds of services to devices that may not otherwise be able to be connected to the internet or to each other, as well as to, as I said, it provides services for all of those things. And mobility itself is not a PCS provider or a commercial mobile radio services provider, but their services can and are used by wireless communications providers to provide backhaul for their networks. So those subscribers who want those services and demand those services and want those services to work will also see a benefit when they utilize mobility.
Thank you. If, if, if I may, does the paperwork say concrete as well on this one?
It does say concrete also.
And this is my concern, and, and this is why I wanted to see it go into committee, because I do think that there is a tangible benefit to the residents of Everett and others. However, we do have some balancing of issues that we need to do. We don't need more poles in the city. If there's a way to put it on an existing pole or even private property, whether it be a separate agreement with other parties, that's great. I, I think that there is a tangible, valuable service that's being provided. I wanted to discuss it a little bit more in depth. So I don't know if we're going to get the opportunity with this or not, but that would be, because we have confusion on the paper, Mr. President, wooden pole versus concrete. And again, it would be something that I would want to look at a little bit more closely with the petitioner as to whether or not they can work with existing poles versus actually installing new ones. So I have no other questions for the petitioner at this point. At some point, I would be making a motion to refer this to Business Community Development.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the petitioner. I wholeheartedly agree with Counselor Capone. And again, looking at Google Maps, there are two existing poles at the corner of Malden Street in Nichols that are existing. Is there a possibility of being able to utilize one of these two poles that are at the corner of Malden and Nickel Street rather than right across the street at the corner of Lawrence and Nickel Street? Is that a possibility?
I would have to take that back to mobility and have them look at it. My expectation is they, those poles would be, again, too short. But I don't, I don't have the, that's a technical answer, and I don't have that answer here. I would have to discuss that with their network.
Two pole, you mean as in, in height?
Yeah, too short.
These poles are higher than the houses. So if they, if you're building something higher than these poles, we really got to look at this, because they're completely above clearance of the homes. So that's why I would like to also see this go into committee, because I think the solution that we could utilize what's existent and not have to add additional poles to this neighborhood, because there are two directly parallel to the corner of Lawrence and Nickel Street. Thank you.
Counselor Del Soler?
That was my next question. If these poles aren't too high, if the, do you know how high an average pole is now? Up to the top of your head?
It depends. Usually anywhere between 35 to 55 feet. I think those are probably 35.
And how high does your pole have to be to accommodate you?
The proposed is 75.
That's huge. And then yours goes on top of that or just on the side of it?
The antenna goes on top of that. Do you get a plane across?
All right, that didn't answer my question. Thank you.
Counselor Matusky?
Mister Grossman, did you say 75 feet?
I did.
And presently, the normal poles are 35 to 55?
Some utility poles are taller. I think the ones I've seen on, in that street are 35 to 55.
And this one has to be connected to an overhead wire?
Yes.
Is that it? Okay. See, the problem that we have in the city of Everett, Mister Grossman, is that we have double poles. I think there's over 100 of them. I'm not exactly sure. We have an ordinance pending right now that companies that refuse to do wire removals at the appropriate time, as Counselor McKinnon brought up, will be fined $1,000 a day. And you said there will be more that are coming. I'm going to look very closely after tonight's council meeting at any pole, not just your company. Enough is enough. Nickel Street is a mess. Have you seen what's on those poles on that street? I mean, it's a wonder they don't keel over. And 75 feet is way, was that the same height as on Ferry Street, too?
Yes.
Oh, boy. Mister President, I'm not going to send this to committee. I know how I'm going to vote on this. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel? No further questions? Gentlemen, excuse us, customary thanks. We'll now open up the public hearing. I'll ask again three times for those in favor, those who oppose. Is there anyone in favor of this petition? Is there anyone in favor of this petition? Is there anyone in favor of this petition? Is there anyone opposed to this petition? Yes, sir.
I am, I stated my name before, but my name is Matteo Gallo. I am in opposition of this petition. I support all the city councils for the same reason, and I adjusted the question for the attorney for Mobile Lite. If they already installed similar systems in other towns, have they had any problems with, with people using cell phones? Because the majority of the people are using cellphone in the, in the units. Or have, have there had any other problems that were referred back to the company that he is aware of? That's my question.
Okay. And sir?
I'm in, in opposition.
Okay. The question comes to me, and then from me to you. So you understand the question, so if you would answer it, please.
I think so. If I, if I understand the question is, will the proposal interfere with cell phones or other wireless devices? No. So it works on FCC frequency, cell phones and, and other devices work on their licensed frequencies, and so it would not, would not interfere and, and most likely in some cases would even support those types of services.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? No further questions, okay? Then I'll ask two more times. Is there anyone opposed to this petition? Is there anyone opposed to this petition? I declare that part of the hearing closed. The subject matter is now before the council. Favorable action, Counselor Capone?
On the, on the motion. Thank you, Mr. President. 75 feet is a very, very large pole. I still would like to inquire about other alternatives, so I do make a motion to refer it to Business Community Development.
Motion made to refer to the committee? Hold on. Committee takes precedent over favorable actions. So Counselor Napolitano?
Thank you. I mean, I concur now with Counselor Capone. You know, when we were talking about poles and the confusion we had on whether we're talking cement, I mean, or wood, now that we're talking about a 75-foot pole, that's something that we were not disclosed, that we were not aware of in the last one. I mean, I'm kind of believe, if you're going to be constructing anything that's going to be that high, it's going to be a cement. It's not going to be a wood structure. If we've got some confusion here, we need to clear that confusion up and hopefully hear some direct information from an engineer from this company, so we can make a, a more educated decision. I mean, I'm not opposed to just blindly phoning anything down, and the reason for that is, we're going to be going through a lot more progress as the city continues to grow and become the different type of entity that it is today. But at the same time, you're all correct, we need to get the details nailed down now before we make decisions. And now that we're talking, this, again, we're back in the confusion of wood versus cement, now we're talking 75 feet, twice as large as any of our, of our current utility poles. If it's good for the city, I'll need more information before I'm going to support this. But I'm not willing to throw it out either at this point. But I'll support the committee.
Sorry, your excuse, sorry. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I feel the same way. I think we need more information on this. I think we need to educate ourselves more on this. So to me, to throw this out, would not educate us. I would like to send it to, I would also prefer go to committee and have the, the petitioners come up and explain how, in detail, how it works, how it benefits the city, and what type of a pole, and how they're going to maintain it, and so on, and so on. So like I, I'm not willing to throw it out either, because I don't think it's fear. I believe that we just need to get more educated on this item.
We have a motion to refer this, motion made in second to refer this to the committee on?
On that motion, Mr. President.
On business development, community development. Counselor Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I am not blindly voting against or for anything. I've made a educated decision tonight to vote against this. How would you people that live in Everett like a 75-foot pole in front of your home? There's a gentleman that lives in the neighborhood here tonight. He's concerned about it. We don't know whether it's concrete or wood. 75 feet is as, almost as high as this building. Mister President, we are city fathers here. We have the wind representatives in the chamber tonight awaiting some other business that they're here on. Let's, let's get on the right foot here. We know the history of these poles, the double poles. Nickel Street is a mess, Mister President, with attachments and, I've said this several years ago. There's boxes, there's wires hanging down. Enough is enough. Go to the Wooden Hospital, Mister Grossman, with your client, and see if you can rent a piece of that building, and that's the right location for you, okay? And do the same thing at the Ferry Street. I am not going to pollute the city with 75-foot, foot poles. You'll be the beginning. As you said earlier, more that are coming. I got news for you and the rest of these transforming computer things, whatever you want to call them. I've had enough of it, okay? It's not going to pollute our city. Put them under the ground, put them on top of private property. As I said, Mister President, nothing personal here. I am prepared to vote against it, and I'm not making a blindly commitment to vote against. I've, um, what I heard enough tonight on this issue. We've been on it for 45 minutes. There's people in the chambers. Enough is enough. Give us a break. We don't know what the, the benefits are, if there is any, to this community financially. Enough is enough. Let's give people a break. Let their sidewalks be clear of poles this size. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. On the motion to refer to the committee, all in favor?
All aye.
All in, all in favor, we'll enter the roll.
On the motion, refer it to the Committee on Community and Business Development. Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Del Soler?
No.
Counselor Florio?
No.
Counselor DePiero?
No.
Counselor Mangant?
No.
Counselor Matusky?
No.
Counselor McKinnon?
No.
Counselor McLaughlin?
No.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Nay.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Four ye, seven nays, Mr. President.
Referring to committee has failed. Subject matter still before you. Motion? Michael, for favorable action? Okay. Motion made in second for favorable action. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing done. Clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Capone?
No.
Counselor Del Soler?
No.
Counselor Florio?
No.
Counselor DePiero?
No.
Counselor Mangant?
No.
Counselor Matusky?
No.
Counselor McKinnon?
No.
Counselor McLaughlin?
No.
Counselor Simonelli?
Nay.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
One ye, ten nays, Mr. President.
The petition has failed. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you coming. Thank you, sir. Clerk will please read item number five on the agenda.
Move for public participation?
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion for public participation, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We have for item number seven to 14, Steve Maisie, the Chief of Police of the City of Everett. That's what this is, right? What did you give me? Okay, okay. If any in the audience that wishes to speak on any matter before the council? Any matter whatsoever, not even appearing on the calendar? One more time, anybody wish to speak before the city council? Thank you very much. Okay. Okay. Motion made in second to close public participation, all in favor, saying aye. All opposed, or move?
Mr. President, can we take item number nine off the calendar, please?
Okay. We have item number seven to 14.
Nine.
Chief of Police. Oh, I have.
Motion to make item nine?
We did. We did that.
Number nine.
Number nine. What's number nine? That's the petition. We, we, I'll just say that we should do this, this here. We're going to, I, I.
These are people who signed in for public participation. Antonio?
Mr. President, I have a motion on the floor.
Right. Did somebody sign in? No? It might have been Mister Gallo who was here on the polls.
Okay. All right. Seven to 14, if you'd like to take seven to 14.
No, the motion's been made by Councilman McLaughlin, Mr. President. Take item nine. I seconded it.
To do what?
To take item nine.
That's not a standard procedure, but motion made in second, take item number nine. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, item nine is before us.
Item nine, just to repeat, storage rampole to 356 Broadway.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Mr. President, through you, could we ask that the petitioner come before us this evening? Mr. Webby?
Hi, everyone. How you doing? Still okay? Sir, do you wish to identify a customer? My name is Sam F. Webby. I do business at 725 Broadway in Everett, Glendale Gas and Service, and I live at 67 New Haven Street in West Roxbury. Petition is, we took over this gas station on Broadway, 356 Broadway. It have, right now, 16,000 gallons worth of storage. We're looking to add, do like two 8,000s instead of the two, four, four, four and four, and one split 8,000 for super unleaded and diesel. So it'll cut down on deliveries, and it'll be more room for storage. And pretty much in the same area where the tanks exist. Like no extra space or anything.
Mr. President?
And the same concrete pad.
15,000 gasoline, 15,000 diesel?
4,000 diesel, and it'll be 20,000 gas, including this.
Mr. President? Mr. President, Mr. Webby, this will eliminate the frequent amount of times you're going to have a delivery truck pulling in and off of your site, correct?
That's right.
Which helps keep traffic moving through the community, through Broadway, as we all know can be backed up, especially with school traffic where this business is located. I'm absolutely in favor of it. You're a great business owner in our community, and I applaud you for trying to make an easier transition for your trucks to pull in and off of your site.
Appreciate it.
So that we can free up traffic and keep it flowing on Broadway. So thank you for your efforts tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President, through you to the guest. So currently in total, there's sixteen thousand gallons?
Yes.
And you're looking to increase it to twenty-four?
Exactly.
Okay. So you're going to have to dig up, put new tanks, all that kind of stuff?
We have to dig up the same area to pull out sixteen thousand storage. So the new tanks, the way they come, is like the...it'll be like two eights, and the third eight will be a split four and four, so it'll be like in one tank.
Okay.
The diesel and the super.
Okay, so there'll be three tanks in total.
So it practically will be installed in the same area, in the same spot, under the same concrete pad.
And how long of a process is that, do you know?
This should take anywhere between three weeks to four weeks tops, including, you know, to get back in business and start pumping gas again.
Okay.
Because environmentally, we have to do this. We have to change the tanks anyway.
Right.
So I figured we, you know, increase the storage under the same, you know, with double wall tanks, and it'd be safer for the environment and...
And on a weekly basis, how many delivery trucks do you think you have coming to that operation now?
Honestly, Councilman, right now, we have like more than three deliveries a week.
Okay.
It'll cut it down to one delivery with this type of storage. If we get extremely busy, you know, it'll be a smaller truck coming in doing regular unleaded or, you know, but it'll cut the deliveries in less than half.
Okay. Very good. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Counselor DePiero? Oh, I get Counselor Palatano?
Thank you. This is actually through the clerk, if I could. Is there any additional concerns? I mean, I understand the logic behind your plan, and it makes sense to cut deliveries down, carry larger quantities in any one spot, but is there any safety concerns with either fire and safety or the planning board with having larger quantities of fuel? By having smaller tanks, in the case of an accident, you minimize the impact, environmental impact.
All I can say is that it's been approved by Fire Prevention. Fire Prevention has signed off on it. I imagine the bigger the tank, the less number of tanks, the less chance of environmental problems, because you're dealing with a single entity as opposed to multiple entities.
Right. And I do understand that modern tanks are using double wall tanks.
That's right, yeah.
So the safety is there as well. As long as fire safety signed off on it.
Yes.
That was my only concern, and I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Counselor Del Solo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. Couple of questions. Will you be closed during this construction?
The garage will be open because the station is big enough to do the tanks in that side area of it, on the right-hand side. You know, it'll be a separate exit, so we're going to try to keep the garage open at the same time, you know, and keep minimal interruption, like all the construction will be inside the station.
And obviously be all fenced off for the kids walking by after school?
Exactly.
And for safety?
Absolutely.
Do you have other stations have these large tanks already installed?
The Ferry Street Station, the tanks are pretty much new. They're less than fifteen years old. And Glendale, they're like about twenty years old. We still have time, another probably ten years if we... All they do, all they want us to do is, we, because we double walled them in ninety-five, all they want us to do is double check them every year, like we do a pressure test on the system. And there's monitors now, Vida Roots, so they test the pipes every day.
Okay.
And they give you a weekly report, like on the gallonage that you have and stuff. State of the art, you know, it's really good.
And last question. When they pull the small tanks out, do they do a soil test before they put the new ones back in?
When they pull the old tanks out?
Pull the old tanks out?
Yeah. They're going to test them, sure. They do a pressure test before and after?
I mean, in the soil itself, that's in the ground.
And the soil, absolutely, because the DEP and Department of Environmental Protection will be involved with that. They will be on-site, so we have to make sure we're up to regulations.
Up to the standards.
And standards.
All right. Thank you. Good to see you. Good to see you here tonight.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, Counsel.
Counsel Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President. And Mr. Webby, I too, by sentiment, I know you had what my mother had in June 2012, and you recovered. You're a miracle.
Thank God.
Yes, and, you know, my question is, there's only a few gas stations on Broadway. Yours is one of them.
Yes, sir.
And now you've bought this new location.
Yes.
At the beginning of the meeting, you heard that we're doing some community development and beautification. Do you have any plans to maybe do some nice landscaping in front of this?
I definitely have, and I'm trying to...I was talking, I asked the mayor and talked to a couple of councilmen about the alleyway behind the gas station that we have over there, because we have the right-of-way, and Walgreens have the right-of-way, and the plumbing place and the restaurant have another issue with that, too. They have the right-of-way, so I was trying to find a way if we could benefit from extending, you know, the fence over that area and lift up the sewer or keep it away from the sewer so we can utilize that alleyway. I'm sorry? No, I'm talking, he's talking about gas stations and what they're going to...
Yeah.
You understand what I'm saying?
Now, this is 356 Broadway.
356 Broadway is a different story. I'm sorry. 356 Broadway, we're just looking to clean up the tanks right now.
Right, but you bought that recently.
Yeah, we got that recently.
But I'm talking like in the front of that, Mr. Webby, if that's right on Broadway...
In the front, absolutely.
You do something nice there?
Absolutely. We're going to fix...
Because, you know, you have the nice bank and...
The pumps are going to be nice, and the asphalt is going to be renewed, and the fence and...
Maybe some landscaping.
Will be fixed up, and a little bit of landscaping on both sides on that.
Oh, good, there you go. I knew you...
You know, whatever, absolutely, whatever it takes.
I think it'd be nice.
This stuff doesn't cost you much.
Stop fresh over there.
Absolutely.
And I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Counsel McKinnon? Nothing? Okay. I guess everything's all said, yeah. Thank you very much, Sam.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Webby, thank you very much for attending. Motion made in second for favorable action. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Del Solo.
Yes.
Counsel Florio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Matusky.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eleven yeas, zero nays. You have granted the petition.
Please suspend the rules and take item number seven.
Motion made in second, take item seven. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so move item seven. It's before you.
Item number seven. Item number seven is in order authorized through the public justice assistance grant. It is ordered by the City Council, City of Everett, as follows. The Everett Police Department hereby authorized the public justice assistance grant of sixteen thousand, twenty-sixty-six dollars for the purpose of purchasing two new speed traffic trailers.
Motion with the chief?
Any questions?
Oh.
Favorable action on the other second.
Motion made in second, ask the chief come forward. Chief?
Just favorable action.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. You don't want him to be forward?
No, just favorable action.
No questions? I had a question, okay.
He's getting us some money.
Motion for favorable action, all in favor, signify by answering the roll call.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Florio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Matusky.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays.
Ten yeas, zero nays. You have passed the order.
Mr. President, please suspend the rules and take item number fourteen.
Item number fourteen. Motion made in second, take item fourteen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, item fourteen. Clerk, please read up the agenda.
Item number fourteen is in order to decline chief police approval for overnight construction work. The order is be had ordained by the City Council, City of Everett, as follows, where the need to organize traffic to be at times being necessary, whereas said work is currently...
Currently prohibited in the City of Everett, whereas the approval of said work is a question of public safety and convenience, therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Everett as follows, that section thirteen A dash sixty-two G fourteen loud and unnecessary noises is hereby amended in subsection six by adding in the last sentence after the phrase seven A.M. the following phrase, unless first authorized in writing by the Chief of Police, and be it ordered that this ordinance shall take effect upon ordainment and subsequent approval by his honor of the mayor.
Any discussion on the matter? Any...Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. The more, the more I read this and the more I looked at it, and the more I think about this topic, no disrespect to the chief whatsoever, I think this is a matter that belongs in the hands of the City Council, and I think that it's something that we would, as a body, take in input from many departments. Chief of Police, Fire Chief, Engineering, Public Works, and I think that collectively we would take their input, and at that point, being the elected officials who are responsible to the citizens of the city, I do think that it falls in our domain, and it's something we should do. Not to mention that the Chief of Police has a very full job. He's got the safety of the city on his hands, and I think that he has enough responsibility with what he's doing. I do think that this is something that we, as a City Council, should be involved with, should remain with. So I would be moving to amend the piece, to strike out where it says Chief of Police and insert vote of the City Council.
Second, I motion.
Motion made in second to amend the amendment, to amend the order by striking out the Chief of Police and inserting the City Council. Any further discussion on that? On the amendment? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Favorable action as amended?
Motion made in second, I'm sorry, Counsel Matusky?
They want a roll call on, I believe, they asked for a roll call on the amendment?
Who asked for it?
Do we need a roll call?
No. It's an amendment.
Anyone can, any member can request a roll call. If I may make a suggestion, and you may have said it, Counsel, if you're going to amend this to be City Council, by vote of the City Council...
Yeah, that's what I said.
Did you, did say that? I'm sorry. I wasn't sure if you said that. I know I heard it somewhere.
Counsel Matusky, you have it? Counsel McGlaughlin?
Okay, roll call on the amendment.
No, hold on. On the amendment?
Requesting a roll call.
On the amendment, right. You want to talk in the amendment?
No, roll call in the amendment.
Oh.
Counsel Capone, this is on the amendment.
On the amendment.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Del Solo.
Yes.
Counsel Florio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Matusky.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
No.
Counsel Palatano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
No.
On the motion?
Two yeas, nine nays, Mr. President.
Three yeas, nine nays. The amendment has failed. On the motion now.
I'm sorry. Nine yeas, two nays. It passed.
Nine yeas, two nays. Motion has failed.
Has passed.
Has passed. I'm sorry, it's passed. So it reads now that the City Council will be, instead of the Chief of Police. Now, on the main motion itself, Counselor...
As amended.
Second, I get Counsel McGlaughlin first. Counsel McGlaughlin?
Mr. President, thank you. On the motion, I'm a little disheartened tonight, to be truthful with you, to see that this amendment passed, seeing that most of the upcoming construction work will be appearing in Ward Six, as we all know. I think that the expedite of the process is a lot easier when you're dealing with somebody who's going to be dealing with noise complaints. The chief is already doing the Sunday permits if you want to ask for a permit. That's either here nor there. Passed, it's over. How does this now work for a developer or contractor who wants to come and get this permission? How do they propose this license?
They would come to the city clerk and, you know, request to amend it. I mean, request to get a permit, a permit to do it.
So it comes to us, we send it to committee, we kick it around sixty days.
Exactly.
Wow, okay.
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our clerk. I believe that even though we've amended this in that small capacity, this is actually going to be voted on for ordainment.
Yes.
So it's not going to slow down that process.
No.
It just keeps the City Council involved with it. So it will move to an ordinance this evening after it goes to the mayor. So I just wanted to make sure that the members knew we weren't restarting the clock, that it will be an ordinance and go from there. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Any further discussion on the motion?
No, I read that.
Favorable action as amended.
Counsel Matusky? I'm sorry, Counsel McKinnon?
It'll take effect upon ordainment and subsequent approval by his honor of the mayor. Five days?
Two, it's got to be the end of the month. I'm sure it is.
Not if there is the...unless we have... It's thirty days unless we have placed, unless a sooner effective date is placed in it, which is done there. The order shall take effect upon ordainment and subsequent approval by his honor of the mayor. If that sentence wasn't in there, it would be thirty days. It is in there. Yes.
So now what?
Favorable action as amended.
As amended. Motion made in second for favorable action as amended by removing the chief's name and putting in City Council's name. Any further discussion? Hearing done, please answer the roll.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Del Solo.
Yes.
Counsel Florio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Matusky.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Oh, I'm sorry. Counsel Palatano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
No.
Ten yeas, one nay, Mr. President.
You have passed the order as amended.
Mr. President, can we suspend the rules and take item number nineteen?
Motion made in second, take item...
Motion reconsideration on the last item.
Yeah. What's that?
Reconsideration on the last item, hoping it doesn't prevail.
Motion second for reconsideration.
Motion made second for reconsideration, hoping it...you can't make that kind of a vote.
You cannot make a negative motion.
I was mumbling.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
What's your motion? What's the motion?
Reconsideration.
On item 14.
Motion made second. Anyone?
Second.
Second for reconsideration. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor? Answer by saying aye.
Counsel Capone.
No.
Counsel Delasola.
No.
Counsel DeFlorio.
No.
Counsel DePiero.
No.
Counsel Mangan.
No.
Counsel Matusky. Counsel McKinnon.
No.
Counsel McLaughlin.
No.
Counsel Apolitano.
No.
Counsel Siminelli. Yeah. Counsel Hanley.
No.
Zero yeas, 11 nays, Mr. President.
Suspend the rules and take item number 19?
Second, anyone? Motion made second, take item number 18 from the agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, the ayes have it. Item number 18 from the agenda.
Item number 19 is a resolution sponsored by Counsel John Leo McKinnon. A resolution requesting updates on mosquito spraying and the Zika virus be resolved by the city council, city of Everett, as follows. The city council hereby respectfully requests that the health department provide a written update on the procedures and locations of mosquito spraying indoor parking in the city, be it further resolved that a written update on any new information on the Zika virus be respectfully provided.
Mr. President, could we have the health department?
Can we have the health department before us, please?
Are they here? Anyone from the health department, present?
Did we receive every, she was here earlier, I'm sorry. I tried to get to her, but we could, actually, was there a response back?
No, I don't have any.
All right.
No, this is, this is new business, isn't it? Yeah, it's the new business. So she wouldn't have response. She wouldn't have received this yet.
All right. So what I'll do is lay it over to the next meeting in August. But now I have her either, she can have a written response back.
You want to refer it to that, to health department?
Yes.
Motion made in second, refer to health department. You want a response back to?
Written response back.
Yep. Okay. All in favor? All opposed, so moved.
Mr. President, can we take item number 28?
Second.
On the calendar.
Call for item number 28.
Item number 28, Mr. President, is an, is an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to allow certain temporary parking facilities, be it ordained by the city council, city of Everett, as follows, whereas a large number of large developments are planned for the city of Everett, whereas these projects will employ a large number of workers, whereas providing parking for employees in some equipment will free up parking for the residents of the city, and whereas a temporary parking facilities need to achieve this end is presently prohibited by the zoning ordinances of our city. Therefore, be it ordained by the city council, city of Everett, as follows, that the revised ordinances of the city of Everett are hereby amended in Appendix A zoning by adding to the table labeled Appendix A, a table of use regulations, the following use. Temporary parking facility accessory to construction activities on another's lot within the LB, provided that such use may not exceed 36 months in duration, and must be operated by the entity undertaking such construction, be it further ordained that the corresponding columns of said table reflect the allowing of said use subject to the aforementioned restrictions, be it further ordained that the corresponding column indicating the requirement of a site plan review, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall take effect upon the passage by the city council and approval by his honor of the mayor.
Fable action on the order.
Counsel Mangan.
Fable action on the order.
Motion made in second for fable action. Counsel Mangan.
Fine, I just didn't know if anybody wanted to hear from the project manager, but I'm fine with fable action.
We have a motion after fable action. End of further discussion. Clerk will call the roll, please.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Wait a minute. This new business? This is a change in the zoning ordinance. We have to send our, the proper motion is refer to the planning board.
So moved.
Okay. Motion.
We have to, uh...
Proper motion is refer to the planning board.
Yeah, refer to the planning board.
Motion made in second, refer to the planning board. Clerk will call the roll.
Voice vote will do.
Voice vote will do. All in favor? All opposed, so moved. Refer to the planning board.
Can we suspend the rule and take item number 29?
Okay. Item number 29, an ordinance amending the compensation for the office of mayor, where his experience and length of service has distored our troops in the employment situation, whereas said attributes often rewarded monetarily in the private and public sector, whereas the chief executive officer or mayor possessing these attributes could be an asset to community in the effective administration of city functions. Therefore, be it ordained that Chapter 7 revised ordinances of the city of Everett are hereby amended by adding a new section 167. Longevity mayor, an individual serving the office mayor shall receive a longevity payment of $10,000 after each completed full term, as mayor, as defined in Article 3, Section 1, Subsection B of the city charter. Any individual serving as mayor at the time of passage of this ordinance shall receive a one-time payment of $10,000 for each briefly completed term, as mayor, as defined in Section 25 of the previous charter. This ordinance shall take effect upon passage.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is, this has been worded wrong. This is not the way it should have been. I'm going to request that you refer it back to me, and the city clerk will both rewrite the wording and get it done the way it should be. And so if you would just make a motion.
Second, Ed.
Thank you. Motion made in second, refer back to this. Yes.
I just, I had a few questions. I realize you're going to rewrite this, and as the fact that you are going to rewrite it, I really would ask your permission to ask just two quick questions about this, only because it's going to have a bearing in my mind how this is presented. Is this monetary compensation, is this part of salary or is this bonus?
This would be considered more in the bonus category as opposed to salary. And like longevity, like employees get longevity for years of service.
My, the reason I'm saying is, again, I understand raises and, you know, I understand. I don't have a problem with that. I just want to make sure that we're not inadvertently inflating the base salary of any future potential mayor. So the base salary is what it is, if I understand what the intent of this is. The base salary will stay what it is, and on the completion of a four-year term, then there is a monetary bonus as a result of successfully completing that term.
That was originally in the original, and I think it needs to be there again to make that clear. I think the language makes it clear, but it's better if you read it, you know, and the language is there. But in the original, it did say this does not affect the base salary of his honor of the mayor, which can only be changed according to the charter by vote of the city council.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to get that clarification up.
Right. It will not change the base salary.
Okay. Counsel McLaughlin.
My question to you, Mr. President, again, on sort of the topic of Counsel Apolitano, but you're going to rewrite this. I would like to see, because we had this in committee before, and I'm a little confused. I thought we, this failed, but I guess it didn't previously. I would like to see that this is effective upon the next election cycle and not for pre-existing. So it goes into effect in 2018, January 2018 forward.
Okay.
I would like to see you write that into the...
We'll take that into consideration. Any further discussion? Motion then to refer to the city clerk. All in favor? All opposed, so moved. We have referred to the city clerk and the president. Clerk, I don't know where we are, item five?
Mr. President, on a point of personal privilege, I just wanted to take a moment tonight to wish somebody in our council chambers a very happy birthday. It's an individual that does a lot of work in the city of Everett Forest on a daily basis. I'd like to wish our chief of staff, Kevin O'Donnell, a happy birthday, and thank you for being here tonight on your birthday, Kevin.
Okay. Item number five, Mr. Chairman, is an order sponsored by Counsel John Hanley, Mr. President. An order regarding paying costs for infiltration and inflow removal systems. Be it ordered by the city council, city of Everett, as follows, that $1,421,000 is hereby appropriated for the purpose of paying costs of sewer infiltration and inflow projects and for the payment of all other costs incidental or related thereto. Be it further ordered that in order to meet this appropriation, the city treasurer, with the approval of his honor of the mayor, is hereby authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1 of the Massachusetts General laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the city therefore. Be it further ordered that all or any portion of this borrowing may be through the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority, and the total amount authorized to be borrowed by this order shall be reduced to the extent of any grants received by the city on account of the projects funded by this appropriation. Be it further ordered that this order shall take effect upon passage by the city council and approval by his honor of the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. If we could have, I don't know if Mr. Demus or somebody, anybody there could, just have a quick question about this.
Eric Demus, CFO.
Thank you, Mr. Demus. I know what I was reading is in the packet that we got, I believe, something about 75% of this was going to be, if I read it correctly, was going to be, was it a grant or something like that, and then?
It is a grant. This is phase nine and 10 of our MWRA funding. Every time we move into different phases, the MWRA has been altering the grant structure, if you will. So our previous phase, we were receiving a 50% grant, 50% debt loan, which is why it's requiring this action. We now moved into phase nine and 10, and under phases nine and 10, they bumped up and adjusted the rates, so the city's now going to be receiving a 75% grant and a 25% loan. And the 25% loan is at a zero interest rate.
Correct.
So out of the 1.4 million which you're required to authorize, the city's only going to be required to pay back $355,000.
That's what I wanted, that's what I just wanted to check. Thank you very much. That was my question.
Any further questions? Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, Mr. Demus. I'm glad that you mentioned it's 0% interest loan, because I read that as well. And could you explain exactly what it is that we're doing with the money?
They're actually going to use this money to address some of the illicit connections that we have with the catch basins. I believe it's approximately 30. There are issues that have been raised by two different regulatory agencies, one of them being Department of Environmental Protection. It's part of the city's overall 40-year infrastructure plan in regards to water and sewer. It's something that we've committed with the DEP to address, and it's one of the items that is most high on their priority list for the city to address. If the city does not address this, then the DEP is actually going to force us to address it.
Okay. All right. And I know that we have a lot of issues with some of our connections behind the condo units on Chelsea Street, the Calvert area. I know we've got a lot of stuff. So I know that this is addressing the catch basins, and we have to do that, but we really need to address those other items as well. But thank you very much for answering the questions. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I would. The city does this every year.
Mr. President, if we could suspend rule 13 as well?
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Matusky.
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Siminelli.
Yeah.
Suspend the rules and take item number 13, please.
Another name for their, yeah.
Yes.
Item number 13 is a resolution requesting use of development revenue for tax relief, be resolved by the city council, city of Everett, as follows, that his honor of the mayor respectfully consider utilizing funds from the Wynn Casino and other developments throughout the city to level our taxes in 2017 and 2018. Be it further resolved that it be considered to apply the yearly income from said developments thereafter to give some much-needed relief to every taxpayers.
Request that Mr. Demus have come before us. And Mr. O'Donnell.
If we could, please have him, that's fine.
Okay. Mr. Demus, on this, we, we had gone over this during, I believe it was budget talks at that time, and I believe the mayor had said that we were looking at doing something to this effect. Did you know the number that we were looking at to actually offset the taxes?
Are you, as far as what specific revenue source? Because when we actually go to set the tax rate, there are numerous different revenue sources that we use.
Whichever, I can't recall at the time which one he had named, but he said that it would be a specific amount. I don't want to say the amount, but there would be a specific amount that he would put towards the tax base for us. So that's what I was looking for. I was looking for the amount, if we could have it, and then if there was a specific revenue source, that would be fine as well.
Sure. Well, as of right now, it'd be premature to try to identify a specific dollar amount for each of our revenue sources, and I'll walk you through what exactly I'm referring to.
Well, I, let me refresh that then. What he had stated, I believe, was $4 million.
Okay. So the $4 million then is in what you're referring to is the city received during this previous fiscal year, $5 million from the wind development related to the casino project. It was the first payment that came due under the community host agreement, which we received 30 days upon issuing our initial permit. That money is being set aside and put into a community enhancement mitigation stabilization account. That's the account that was created through special legislation. So because those steps were taken, the city now has the ability to utilize that money in fiscal '17 for various capital-related projects. Those capital-related projects also include debt service that we have, existing debt service on capital-related projects that we've already actually issued debt on. At this point, underneath the existing forecast that the mayor's team has put together in producing this budget, it was approximately $4 million that would be used to offset general fund and to reduce the burden on city taxpayers within the general fund, predominantly your real estate tax. However, there are many components to that funding schedule and developing those revenue sources. Some of the significant revenue sources that we're intending to use will be free cash for fiscal '16, I believe that this...
What's in free cash now?
Free cash, we're in the process of closing out fiscal '16, and throughout that process, we have to identify all of the revenues, close out all of the expenditures, encumbrances, and actually close the fiscal year. We're in that process right now. Once we do that process, we submit our balance sheet and our income statements to the Department of Revenue. During that process, the Department of Revenue is going to certify the city's free cash. So I couldn't take a position right now as to what a free cash is. Technically, the city does not have any free cash, as of right now, to appropriate, to use for taxes or for other purposes, given the fact that the fiscal year is now expired and we're in a new fiscal year. So we now have to wait to close out the year, wait for the Department of Revenue to recertify our free cash, and we're going through that process now.
And how long should that take about? When should we have an answer back?
I would say we should have an answer depending on how things are processed on our end and then how they're processed by the Department of Revenue, within the next 60 days.
So within...
I would shoot for late August, early, mid-September.
So say maybe the first meeting in September, we could have that number by?
If we can get it certified by the Department of Revenue, I'd be happy to share it with city council as soon as we get that certified.
And then would that number reflect the number that we're looking forward to do the tax offset?
It would be a large component of what we're, what we're looking at.
Sure.
When we're going to set the tax rate, in addition, it's not just the revenue sources and what are available. Stabilization accounts get certified, our free cash, which includes the $5 million. We're certainly anticipating using a large portion of that for the general fund, and we're looking into using a portion of that to help the ratepayers for the water sewer. But as part of that process, we have to go through numerous certifications with the state so that we can get the full, complete picture to come to city council with our recommendations to, as to what we're going to use to offset taxes. Part of that certification process is our assessed valuations. So we actually have to see where the assessments and where our values come out as part of, part of this process. So there are numerous pieces, and they're constantly changing and constantly evolving as we're working with the state to close out our books and see where those balances lie.
Okay.
And we're in that process for the next 60 to 90 days.
All right, so fair to say something should be coming out in September. So I'll wait till, till requested back before us, mid-September?
Sure.
Second meeting of September?
As part of our estimates that we put together in what was, what the mayor presented to the city council, we're estimating at a minimum right now using $1 million of free cash once it's certified.
Okay. And then we'll gather the rest from other sources, if we need be?
Yes. We're going to have, as part of this process, we also had to put together estimated local revenues. We've done that. Certainly, the wind revenue, the, how we're recording that activity. How it works is that any reimbursements that we receive from wind go directly into the general fund. Those have to come in as general revenue, and as such, we actually have to budget, and that's why you saw some of this more significant increases, specifically in the building department, $1.4 million was included in their professional services. So as we're closing out this process and closing out the year, we're going to put all of those pieces together to present a complete package to city council.
Thank you. Mr. O'Donnell, do you have anything to add to that, or?
No, I think Eric put it by...
Pretty much wrapped it up.
Yeah, that's...
Happy birthday, by the way.
Thank you very much.
I'll yield to my colleague.
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you. So I know that the mayor was here, was talking about $4 million. In today's, if we took a snapshot of today, what would that do for the average taxpayer?
It's premature for me to even try to make an estimate as far as that concerned. What, and the reason why I say that is, it's not just the $4 million as a revenue source, it's how it's going to have an impact on the tax rate, and the largest component of how that's going to impact on the tax rate is where our valuations come in. And we're seeing right now on average around 3% on single-family homes and 6% and higher on our multifamilies. So until I get that very large piece of the puzzle, it's nearly impossible to try to forecast how that's going to have an impact on the tax rate.
Okay. Well, as it exists today, though, with that, can you give me what that would do for today? Because we did a million, I think, and what did that impact? So $4 million, we multiply that by four, right?
Right, but actually, well, it would. If you're talking dollar for dollar, it would be $4 million that, less than what we would have to raise through taxation.
Okay.
How that would have an impact on the specific rate, I don't have those numbers directly in front of me.
Well, the average bill is...
Yeah. To calculate how that would have an impact, I would be taking a guess, and I would rather not do that.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't want you to do that. And if I could, through, through you, Mr. President, to chief of staff, is today your actual birthday?
Yes, it is.
What a pleasant way to spend it. You're a lucky man.
You're in good company.
I know that the...
Could have been a better way to spend it.
I know the mayor has stated at some of our meetings that he's agreeable to work with the council to, you know, allocate whatever funds necessary in order to try to reduce the burden to the taxpayers. So, I just wanted to, to get an idea of, because it's a policy, you know, decision. I just wanted to get an idea of what the thought process was in the corner office with regards to that. Because as you know, we've, we've all mentioned it, I know that you're concerned about it as well. We've got the water rates out what they are and taxes are, are high. We're trying to do everything that we can to alleviate those burdens, especially in light of the new development that we have coming in, the wind development. These are all things that are going to add a lot of issues into daily lives, good and bad. And we want to make sure if we're getting this growth and we're having this type of activity in the community, that the quality of life collectively for the residents is, is going to improve dramatically. And I just want to get a sense of what the position was of, of the, the mayor's office with regards to significant movements towards reduction in rates and things of that nature. Any kind of relief that we can give to the taxpayers. I don't know if you, if you can speak to that at all tonight?
Well, these are certainly all, all avenues that have been being explored. Actually, before Eric and I even came, came aboard, the mayor's been committed and he's, we have continued conversations and exchange of ideas. And the overall goal is the ultimate improvement of the community and the citizens as a whole.
Right.
And that's, he's committed to that aspect. And we just have to make sure that we do it correctly, do it by the numbers and work collaboratively to, to put those, that process in place. But like I said, these are conversations that, you know, began long before Eric and I started. And it's always been his vision to do so.
Great. Because again, with, with this kind of growth and this kind of activity that's happening in the community, we want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can, not only to, to benefit what we're seeing, the aesthetics and everything else, but the actual bottom, bottom line, the, the, the pocketbook collectively out there, that everybody is getting the benefit of what's happening in the community, not only with regards to services, but the real quality of life and actually in the pocketbooks. So, yeah, that's, that's where we're always coming from, so.
The whole purpose of development.
Great. Thank you. You, you wanted to add something?
I just wanted to also add, from a policy standpoint. Certainly, the community hosted, projects has started to move forward, community host agreement. Now, those payments are starting to kick in. And as part of that process, those payments are gra, are going to consistently increase over time and, and quite significantly. So, for this fiscal year, we're looking at approximately twelve point five million dollars that we're going to be receiving in this fiscal year. And some of the questions and, and discussions that I've had with the mayor were certainly he is very concerned with trying to reduce the burden on the taxpayers. We also realize, though, at the same time, what he wants to project is consistency and stability. So, we're not looking to generate large spikes in people's tax bills. The whole purpose is try to get to the point where we can have those level off and then eventually have those start to actually go down. But what we're looking for is consistency and trying to avoid those spikes. Because just as the city's required to budget, each and every one of our, the residents are required to budget as well. So, it's our duty to try to maintain that consistency. And that's something that the mayor has tried, it tasked me with, to work with him very, very hard, to keep that consistency and keep things muddled out.
And, and that's great. So, it seems we're all on the same page that collectively, we've got to move forward and we're going to do what we can to try to lessen the economic burden on the, on the people who live here. So, I appreciate that. Thank you very much, gentlemen. I don't have any other questions.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was actually going to put something like this on the agenda for you to work out the figures, but I basically know that you really can't work out the figures till about November. Is that correct, when the tax rate comes out and all your figures come in from the state?
That is correct. It's, it's roughly, my goal is to accelerate the process over what the city did last year. And last year, we were in towards the end of December as far as the tax rate setting process was concerned. Prior to do, actually setting the tax rate, there are a number of votes that are required by city council and that would be the use of stabilization funds and free cash. So, my goal this year is to actually wrap up our portion as far as the closeout process with the state is concerned. I'd like to have that done by the end of August, early September, so that we can get our information into the state and get bumped up on that queue so that how the state deals with it is, the first communities in are the first ones that are dealt with. So, they take everything in queue regardless of size or location. So, my job, what my goal is this year is to try to get us into early, rather, late October, if not early November, and accelerate last year's process by at least a month so that we have more time for discussion and disclosure with city council.
Right. So, the, the point I'm trying to get to was that I'd like to see us get all those figures in, then have the mayor say, we can put four million towards the taxes and this is what it's going to save the taxpayer. So, I don't want the viewing audience thinking that they're going to get four million dollars towards the taxes and the tax bill are going down half, because that's not going to happen. You know what I'm saying? I'm just trying to be more honest with, with the viewing audience. So, the point I'm trying to make is, could you please have all those figures in, when you come up? If we put so much towards the taxes, how much is going to save the average single-family home? That's what we normally go by, or the average two-family home? So, because by that time, we will have the rate and we'll also have the value.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, I think that would be the best time to bring everything forward, when we have the rate, the value, how much you're going to, how much you, we anticipate on reducing the taxes and how much it actually will be reduced.
Yes. And, and that certainly is our goal. So, when you're taking action as to how much from various sources, such as the stabilization accounts, you'd be able to see exactly what impact that's going to have on the tax rate itself.
Taking money from the stabilization fund?
Yeah, as well as free cash and what have you, but yes.
I, I'm, I've never been in favor of taking money out of the stabilization account. I, I, not that I don't want to lower the people's taxes, let's get that straight. I've always been in favor, if we could take the money out of the stabilization fund, if we know we can replace it. In other words, we know we're getting a check down the line of five million dollars or six million dollars or ten million dollars from wind and we're going to borrow five million dollars from the stabilization fund, but we're going to replace it. I, I'm, I'm thinking of putting more into the stabilization fund. I believe we have to stop building that up a little bit more.
I, I would certainly like to see the cities continue to build up their reserves to a, a certain percentage of general fund expenditures. When I say stabilization fund, that actually includes the newly created community mitigation stabilization fund that we received from wind. So, where that existing five million dollars is currently sitting.
Okay. But I, like, I don't want to, I want to make sure we don't take all the eggs out of one basket because we always, people also have to understand that in the future, you don't know what's going to happen. We, we, we can't build our taxes and build our city just based on wind. I think it's great they're coming in. We have hotels coming in, we have a lot of growth coming in. We can't base that just on that one business, because God forbid, anything happens, that business is out, where we're going to get the revenues? So, I think we've got to be a little careful on how we handle the situation.
Agreed. And that's why I'm saying it would be premature at this time for us to try to make any decisions, because there are many pieces to the puzzle and it's not just one piece.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Counsel McKennan?
Real quick, Mr. President, the four million, just so everyone's clear, and it, it's probably not just going to be generated from the wind project. It's going to be generated from other, other avenues that are going to be coming in, other businesses and, you know. So, we're going to be doing a lot more than just wind, I would assume. But that's the topic of discussion now. The four million would just be to level off, level fund for two thousand, what, seventeen?
It would be for the two thousand and seventeen budget, yes.
And then the, then the next year, Mr. Demus, the next year would be another, say if we did another four, that would level off then? And then we would start seeing a reduction when? In the following year?
Well, for, for this year, we're looking-
I understand your spikes and, and all that stuff. But what I'm trying to do now is I'm trying to get a realization for the viewing public that's at home so that they can understand what you're laying out, what we're trying to do. So, if we, if we have four million this year, we'll level fund. If we had four million next year, we'll level fund. And then when would they see a benefit of the, the tax bills going down?
Well-
Just so they understand.
There are so many components to what you're asking, it would be difficult to, because you're talking, you're just talking right now about the revenue side and you have to look at the expenditure side as well.
Expendence-
The mayor's current five-year, the, the mayor's current five-year financial forecast. And, and don't hold me to this, it was one of the items that we had presented. It also still included in a copy of each of your budgets. I believe where we saw with our current forecast and obviously the forecast, that we saw that the, the taxes would level out roughly around fiscal nineteen, certainly by fiscal twenty, when the casino became operational. And then that positive impact that it has on the overall tax rate is where you'll see, probably fiscal twenty, twenty-one is where you'll actually start seeing a real impact, if not a, a decrease in, in your tax rate. That's based on what we know right now, that's based on what we're forecasting.
So, that's a five-year forecast?
It is a five-year forecast.
And then at the end of the five years, we may see a decrease? But level fund across the way? Is that what we're saying?
Right now, we'd be forecasting that it would have a, an impact on the tax rate and probably within the next four years of taxes decreasing.
Okay.
Based upon what our anticipated expenditure growth would be over the next five years. And every single year, what we're doing is we're updating that five-year financial forecast.
Okay. So, I'm all set with my question.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel McLaughlin?
Mr. Demus, through you real quick.
Good.
I, I lost you about thirty-five minutes ago. If you could repeat with you, sir. No, I'm joking. Lower-
I thought I was you.
Lowering our property tax means assessed value would also go down, correct? But if we keep it at, at a consistent level and then put the additional money into infrastruc, not infrastructure, but police fire improvements into the community, is that not a better five-year forecast for the city?
Well, your assessed values are not going to go down, or at least that's what you'd hope. You would want your assessed values to go up. Your assessed values are certainly a component of that entire calculation. But at the end of the day, what you have to, what you, try to just put it in the most simplest terms, if you appropriate X amount of dollars, you should generate X amount of dollars in revenue. Certainly, real estate taxes are one of the largest components to that revenue source. So, if you can have other, identify other revenue sources to help offset the expenditures that you're rigging in, it's going to have a positive impact on your real estate taxes.
Okay. Thank you.
Where the assessed values come into play is, it's hard to, it's hard to, it's hard to forecast what that rate is until we get those assessed values.
Yep. No, makes sense. Thank you.
Counsel Capone? Okay, I'll say. Most, thank you very much, gentlemen, for appearing. Appreciate it.
I'd like to lay this over to the second meeting in October.
Second meeting?
Yes.
Motion made, seconded. Refer the subject matter to the second meeting in October.
Wow. Now, I'm going to have to-
Second meeting in October. Okay. Clerk, oh, we have a, item number eleven, we have a petition that's still in the audience.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, take item eleven off the calendar, please.
Mr.? Motion was made and seconded to refer this to the second meeting in October. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Mr. President, if, if I may, before we, we move to another piece, is there a Mr. Greg Harris in the audience? For the Excelsior Police or no? Okay, that's fine then.
He wasn't there? Okay. Make a motion, take item number eleven.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, take item number eleven. All in favor, signal if you're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, item eleven is before us. Clerk, will please read the item on the agenda.
Item number eleven, be it ordered by the city council, City of Everett, as follows. A petition for renewal of junk deal size from American Scrap Metal at three sixty-seven Third Street is hereby granted.
Make a motion for favorable action?
Second.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action. Further discussion? There are none, all in favor, signal if you're saying aye. No, answer the vote.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delisola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio? Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Mannigan?
Yes.
Counsel Matusky?
Yes.
Counsel McKennan?
Yes.
Counsel McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Palatano?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Hey.
Counsel Hanley?
Yes.
Ten yezeonaze, Mr. President.
Ten yezeonaze, the petition has been granted. Sorry to keep you bill.
Mr. President, would you make a motion to take item number?
Twenty-two and twenty-three collectively?
I'll take item twenty-three first. They're not the same, same items. Item twenty-three, take. All in favor?
Aye.
All's moved, all opposed. So, item twenty-three is before us.
Just twenty-two.
Item twenty-three?
Twenty-two.
Purple, read item twenty-three, please.
Just twenty-two.
Oh, twenty-two? You said twenty-two and twenty-three?
Yeah. Item number twenty-two, the resolution, be it by Counsel Fred Capone, Counsel Wayne Matusky, and Counsel Michael McLaughlin, Counsel Peter Palatano. I think that's it. Be resolved by the city council, City of Everett, as follows. The city council respectfully request that Mrs. Souza, the city's liaison at Massport, appear at our next council meeting to discuss the excessive airplane noise and what recourse we have as an impacted community.
Counsel Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Matusky has been championing this issue for many, many years. And, you know, we, everybody in Ward One has been putting up with airplane noise. I'm in my backyard, I, I can, I can practically see the males on the tray.
Me too.
It's, it's very, very low. And I know that for a long time, we didn't have anybody as a representative to Massport. Now, we do have Mr. Souza. We really need to find out what we can do. We are definitely an impacted community. There's no way that you can say that we're not. I know that the communities that are closer to the airport, they have all kinds of programs and remedies for them with regards to windows and things of that nature. But we, we need to find some relief in the city. We, we can't keep looking at each other and talking about this every single meeting. It's having a serious detrimental impact on the quality of life of the people who live here. And if, you know, I'd like to have Mr. Souza at our next meeting so we can discuss it, see what avenues are available for us as a community, what we can do to get Massport's attention, try to do something about that. So, I, I thank you. I yield if the other members want to speak.
Counsel Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm so pleased that so many councilmen now have, I know that they're concerned about this serious issue. I did have an opportunity to speak to Mr. Souza, who is the Massport Citizens Advisory Council member, appointed by the mayor recently. And unfortunately, you know, I had placed on the calendar at our last meeting, I believe it was, a resolution. I'm looking for it now. Here we go. Sponsored by Wayne Matusky, that Massport be made aware of constant increased air, air traffic noise on June twenty-first and June twenty-second. And I know the city clerk is responsible to notify people. Did you notify, if it's okay through you, Mr. President, to the clerk?
Via, via the mail, yep.
It's in the mail?
We sent it through the mail.
So, we haven't received any correspondence?
Not as of yet.
Also on that, Mr. Clerk, it was requested that we send a copy to Mr. Souza, and he never received one.
I'll get him a copy of it.
Very, very important. This issue, to me, is personal. You know, I was appointed by Mayor Rigucci, when he was mayor, to that Citizens Advisory Council. I travel all over the state with a group of concerned people. Now, I, I've got the East Boston Times here, Mr. President, and I just want to, it's a full-page ad. This is Public Relations from Massport, okay? This is a full-page article on, on Mr., Mr. Souza has actually just arrived in the chamber. This was printed in the East Boston Times last week, okay? That, they're proposing at Terminal E to add seven new gates. That's the international location. And let me just, they got some bullet points here. I just want to read these. So, this is for the people of East Boston, not Everett, by the way. And if you think this is not serious, on the two dates that I have for June and then on, it was too late to get it on the calendar, but, oh, here it is here. This was left by Ms. McCory, Wayne, I couldn't get this on the calendar, that the Massport director be made aware that on July twentieth, which is just a few days ago, noise levels from airplane traffic occurred every sixty seconds from noon until midnight, causing sleep disorders and quality of life issues for the citizens of our city. And I am not kidding you. You know what that adds up to? Hundreds and hundreds of planes, okay? Now, let me just read, if I can, Mr. President, some bullet points from this, this public relations scam that they pull over in East Boston. We're not East Boston. You know, there are prisoners in their house, they get soundproofing and so forth. And I have a lot, a lot of friends that live in East Boston, first of all. But they've, they've got new parks and they have a relationship, and good luck to them, you know, because I knew a lot of activists from East Boston were involved in noise levels over the years. But listen to this one. Significant reduction in CO-voc-nox-sox in particular matter emissions. What, you know, these are the things that are flying over our head now, okay? And I know it's boring to some people in this chamber, but I'm going to tell you right now, I'm serious. I want certified letters, Mr. Clerk, henceforth on, on anything to do with Massport. This is, we haven't, seriously, if Mr. Souza is he in the chamber? Yeah. He said he didn't receive the thing. I'm very serious about this. And for those who get bored with this issue, good luck to them. But my neighbors are upset, I'm upset, we have new development coming into this city on one of the last frontiers and, and on the parkway. You won't be able to open a window if that's the case. That's the flight path and they're using. And I got news for you. They could ship, and I know the clerk lives right in the same. Sit in your backyard on these three dates, you can't do it. I had company in from Alaska, Mr. President, and I didn't say anything about the planes, but after about a half an hour, my, my cousin said, a plane just went over. So, we timed it. It was every sixty to seventy seconds. Hundreds and hundreds of planes are coming over sections of our city. And Mr. Souza is actually in the chamber. If I could have him come up and ask him a question, Mr. President, that, that'd be kind of helpful, if you wouldn't mind.
Make a motion?
I'd like to make that motion, invite him up.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Souza, come forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Mr. Souza, would you please address the council?
As I said, Mr. President, he did not receive the paperwork and question from our last meeting. Mr. Souza, thank you for being here. I, I guess you're going to have to introduce yourself.
Good evening. Tony Souza, Director of Planning and Development. I've just overhearing briefly, you and I spoke-
But you also, you've got to say your title with ma, you're appointed by the mayor.
Oh, if, if I may, I'm also, I serve as the, the Everett representative on the Massport Advisory Council.
Citizens Advisory Council, okay. Mr. Souza, we discussed this earlier today. We've been inundated in certain sections of Everett. And all they have to do, believe it or not- been inundated in certain sections of Everett, and all they have to do, believe it or not, is shift this thing to another section of Everett. It won't even affect me, but I feel sorry for other people, and they've done it before. Now, we've gotta do something about this because it's becoming a serious, to me, it's a quality of life issue. I'd like to get the Board of Health involved, and I guess we have a decibel machine that can add, you know. I'm gonna give you this article that Massport put out, but what have you actually, I know that you are a group of, what, 24? Or is it 26?
A little more than that, actually. The body itself, as you know, even probably better than I do, because I believe either you were involved with the board or served on the board at one point, or a similar board like that, they do represent all of the communities. They're represented from all the communities in the greater Boston area. That particular board's newly formed, but just to go to, with respect to this item, and there was also an item at the last meeting as well, I would, it would certainly be of great benefit, I think, to myself, to meet with you and do a follow-up on particular questions you have and items. I would love to convey that over, whether, however, the shape, form this comes back to me. I would love to continue the conversation with the folks at Massport. I know you and I talked about it briefly, I think a week or two ago, on the original item, and so I would appreciate the opportunity, you and I, discussing, go over your items.
Well, you have called me in the past and said you've noticed the airplane noise increasing. About a month ago, you left me a message. But needless to say, I just spoke to the clerk, and he's gonna make sure you get a copy of that. Now, it's very important that Massport knows that the City of Everett is taking a positive step, a proactive step, if you wanna call it, that we cannot tolerate 18 to 24 hours of noise levels. And I am not kidding. When I say every 60 seconds, I mean it. It's every 60 seconds, and what comes out of these planes, I just was mentioning it as you walked into the chamber, they're talking about, they're adding some, seven new gates at Terminal E. Whether that affects us, I'm not too sure, but we've got some concerns about noise levels, about the stuff that comes out of these planes, you know, and I want to get you, as our voice here in Everett, to have some kind of a dialogue and let them know, what is the reason on these particular dates? July 20th, four days ago, was unbelievable, okay? And then we got June 21st. I'm gonna write them down for you, so that when you, you have a person that you speak to there, other than the council?
Yes, and certainly I would welcome any communication from the council or from yourself directly. I'd be happy to convey it over to the folks.
Okay, I'm gonna hand you this.
It would be very helpful.
And then, I think it's the intention of the sponsors to get an update from you in August, and let them know that we are ser, you know, this is just a rough draft so that we can get something going here, because it has to be done. Whether we have a, you know, invite the public to come up here and really, people are so fed up with calling that, was it 561-3333? Is that the number? They changed it a few years ago by one digit, just to, they were getting a lot of calls, you know, and they changed it really trickily. Oh, no, as a matter of fact, they, I can't find it. If anybody can find it, they had sent a report here, Mr. President, before I got back on the council, I think it was last year. 28 people from Everett complained. I think a total of 60 times, I mean, come on. Anyway, to make a long story short, they blame it on the wind. They blame it on the direction of the wind. These dates that I have here, the weather was perfect. We're talking five-star weather days. Sunny, bright, beautiful, no wind, and they blame it on the wind. See, it's smoke and mirrors from these people. I've dealt with it in the past. We had it solved. Now it's coming again. And what they try to do, Mr. President, if I can just mention this, is take the curse off another community like Arlington and so forth, and they shift it over to us. But to have hundreds of planes every, every 60 seconds, so you add that up in a 10-hour period, you're talking 600 planes. But it went on longer than that. And I am getting to the point where it's frustrating, and I wanna thank my colleagues, by the way, who have been so concerned about this matter like me, but I have faith in Mr. Sousa, I really do. But I'm gonna open this up, and I'm gonna also hand him this, so he'll know the dates in question. And Mr. Monarazzo, you'll get him a copy of that?
Yes.
Thank you.
For the sixth time.
Thank you. Peter Napolitano. Counselor Napolitano, please.
Not really, at this point, how much more I can add to that, other than, I mean, I do agree. I mean, we've got, I mean, my backyard, my whole southern portion of my house is right on the glide path of aircraft landing and taking off from Logan. You know, the problem with living close proximity to an airport is the same problem you had, we had back when I was in the military, we worked on the flight line. The noise has become so commonplace, after a while, you forget they're there, until you start experiencing diminished hearing and other psychological effects of being around, you know, these large jet engines. So, I mean, it's important that we don't let up, you know. Last year, collectively, you know, we were convinced the city council would collectively send a request to Massport through our representative and a state senator. We got somebody on the community now. So, we need to keep this issue going, because, again, after a while, you're just not gonna hear it anymore, but it's there, and it's bothering, and it's gonna continue to impact our community if we don't take some type of action. That's what I wanna say on that.
Thank you. Counselor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Sousa, how often does the Massport board meet?
That particular board's fairly new. We've met, newly established within the last year and a half. I think we've met about three times.
Okay. I also think that we need to take this serious, and we need to really do some homework on this. I was down at Glendale Park a few weeks ago at a softball tournament, and the planes going over Glendale Park were so bad, the same day I got home, I got some calls from the residents on Carter Street and some of the residents in the village. It was so bad on Saturday, I couldn't play bocce in the bocce tournament because the planes flying over Sacramento Park was so bad, I couldn't concentrate. It's a bad situation. We need to take it serious. We need to, we need to take it serious. It's a hindrance in all of our neighborhoods. Thank you.
And I think with respect, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. It's sad, our colleague has to use that for poor bocce skills, but that's all right. That's all right. Through you, the pebbles were on the court moving, through you, Mr. President, to Mr. Sousa. This piece was just on here this evening, and I surely don't wanna be asking you anything that you're not prepared to answer. So if I ask you anything that you wanna hold off till the next meeting, appreciate it. But some of the concern, as Counselor Matusky said, it's spot-on. It is every 60 seconds. I'm in my backyard, it's coming right over my house, and I'm seeing it every 60 seconds. And they're coming lower, and they're bigger planes. And I know what they do is they change the flight pattern.
Sure.
And sometimes it's like the cable company, they'd switch between houses, and one would get good service, and one would get poor service, and they'd switch it back when there are enough complaints. I think you said that the body's met three times in a year and a half.
Correct.
Yeah, that's not enough. I know you don't control that, but I mean, that tells you what Massport thinks about these types of issues, three times in a year and a half. What I'd like to know from you, from your experience being on this council, what does Massport think about Everett's claim that it's an impacted community? Do they see that the impacted communities are strictly Winthrop and East Boston? Or do they understand that we are being impacted, and it's something that they need to look into?
Right. With respect to the City of Everett, we are an impacted community, and they do understand that. With respect to those particular dates, I am curious to know, and certainly the city deserves an explanation as to why we were particularly or uniquely impacted on those particular three dates or two dates that was mentioned here. Could, I'm just guessing here, maybe it could've been multiple factors, could've been something, an emergency at the airport that we don't know, we don't have the benefit of necessarily knowing offhand. But I certainly think with respect to the group, and regardless whether they meet once a week or once a year, I do think, though, that there should be, from Massport, and this is nothing new, a communication from them to the city, as, whether informally or formally, to let us know that, given on this certain date or this timeframe, we've experienced this unusual flight pattern because of reason X, Y, or Z. I think that would be helpful. It is difficult sometimes to think that one of the rationale where they would change the runways is because of the wind, but I don't remember exactly on those given dates, but there have been certain days where you kind of ponder a little bit and say, gee, I wonder why, because I don't see the difference in wind direction or in weather conditions or whatnot. So there might be an unusual factor that caused them to do that, and I think it's important that we get that information relayed back to us from Massport. So, to answer your question in short, though, they do recognize we are an impacted community, and like the City of Everett counterparts on the other side of, south of Boston, also experience similar situations as well. It's a challenge. It's a challenge. But I will certainly, with whatever comes from here, and I know that this is a new business item, but even with the previous item, will certainly relay it over to the folks at Massport, and I will expect a communication from them. And as soon as I get it, I gladly would submit a copy to the council as well, so you have it with the most current information that I get from them, too.
No, I appreciate that, and that's really all we can do. I mean, it's kinda like, you know, trying to grab a lion by the tail. I mean, you're sitting there going, hey, look, there's noise here. We're getting impacted. They acknowledge, at least I'm happy that they acknowledge that we're impacted community, because I know at one point in time, there's a little circle drawn around the airport. Inside the circle's impacted, outside, you're just a complainer. So, it has been a longstanding issue, I mentioned. There are members on this board that have been talking about this issue for a long, long time, and I'm right in the flight path, too, and it, you know, we've got to do something. So, I don't know what that something is, but if you can bring these concerns to the council, and the first step is the recognition of an impacted community. So, we're there. Amen. Second part is, what do we do about it? What can we do about it? What are options, avenues available to the community? Anything you can do along that front would be greatly appreciated.
Certainly, and I will, please trust, I will do my best to get some feedback from Massport prior to the August meeting. Guarantee, but I will do my best, and I'll be happy to follow up with any of the councils here.
I appreciate that.
On this or any other.
Thank you very much.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, this is an ongoing problem forever, because I hear this every year. Now, it's gonna, it's a thing that's gonna be on every month. So, we know we have to do something about it, and we understand, because people are complaining. Now, as you said, you meet, they meet three times a year, the council?
They've met, in my memory, I believe it's been three times or so, the group has met in the last year and a half.
But meeting with the council and just talking and not getting results, I mean, I know this is not your fault, and I'm certainly not taking it out with you. I mean, at this point, I just wanna send it to the governor. If we're gonna, if we're gonna turn them on, and you're gonna go in front of a council and get nowhere, then let's just go right to the talk. I mean, let's work on this once and for all, and that's it. I mean, just by putting this on and speaking about it, an hour, an hour and a half, every week, isn't gonna help the noise go away. So, that's my recommendation.
Counselor Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know the, yeah, it was getting late, and I appreciate the comments that my colleagues have made. I have three dates here, June 21st, June 22nd. Now, those are right next to each other, right? Those were like 20-hour days of constant ear noise, airplane noise, and July 20th. Was that Saturday? Yeah. Today's the 25th, so, it was unbelievable. But these are three days, okay, in question, that I would like, you know, say, gee, these, but, you know, it's constant, okay? Some days, you know, I can, you know, I'm a reasonable man, you know, when it comes to this issue, a couple of hours, you can live with it, but not constant barragement. And I'm very concerned, as I said, Mr. President, at the last meeting, there are serious health concerns. I just rattled off, I'm gonna give you this newspaper, too. I should actually have the Board of Health involved in this whole situation at this point. I just mentioned six chemical, whatever they are, emission things, and can you imagine what we're getting over, you know, into the year above our heads? But I'm gonna give you these three dates, but I don't want you to think these are isolated, you know, just in these three. These are the ones that are really serious impacting the quality of life. As Counselor Napolitano said, there are serious health issues involved with sleep disorders, with just a litany of things. And if you could get a dialogue, we're gonna lay this over, I hope, until a meeting in August, and then you could hopefully get some kind of rapport going on over there. And the last thing I wanna hear them say is that the wind was blowing in a southeasterly, northeasterly direction, which makes no sense, because these days were beautiful weather days, and I'm telling you, because I was out, you know, and around that day. But, you know, if they think they're gonna pull the smoke over, we were very successful a few years ago. We had a rally in Everett Square with over 250 people, okay? We had news there, news cameras and so forth. We had people from all over the area there. That can be done again, you know, but let's see what we can get an understanding going on, and then we can get this decibel machine that the chief of police talked about. And, you know, that's why I brought up the fact that motorcycles and these mufflers, I am, I've got a noise problem now, you know? Everything bothers me. Well, you know, it could be my age, too, but I don't know if I'm getting older or losing it here, but it's just, you know, you got these guys with the mufflers with, and they got planes with the, so anyway, I'm gonna give you these three dates, and I appreciate it, Mr. President, and my colleagues are supporting this, and hopefully you can come back. And, you know, these meetings that we talked about, the advisory council, I know what they're about, but you actually can do one, as the representative of Everett, get our information back to us, and, you know, and give them what our feelings are here, like Counselor Capone said. You don't have to go to an actual meeting to get information from them, because you are appointed to the position. So, these are the dates. What were you saying two earlier to me?
Counselor, I just wanted clarity, because what you wrote down were just two dates.
Okay, there's the third one here.
But now you've articulated the third one.
Okay, they were all there.
Thank you.
But these are the three bad days that I could call. Thank you.
So the motion was to refer it to the next meeting?
Excuse the customary thanks.
Thank you.
Move to...
Thank you.
Motion to refer to our next meeting, inviting Mr. Sousa.
Invite him again? Motion re, motion...
Chairman, on the motion?
Invite the guest. All in favor?
Oh. On the motion, can we ask a representative of Massport to maybe appear before us in August to talk?
You can ask, but doesn't necessarily mean they're gonna be...
No, you can ask the governor to come. It doesn't mean it's gonna happen. Can we have somebody from the state come to talk to us about this, so that they can hear from us directly and understand that it's a serious matter?
Also, add a representative from Massport appear at our next meeting. We'll wait, but see what happens.
Mr. President, on that motion, see, the FAA is involved in a lot of this stuff, just so you'll know. Everything that Massport supposedly does is controlled by FAA, which is the Federal Aviation Administration. Thank you, Counselor. And I've been to meetings on that, but I also think that, at some point, can we ask the Board of Health and the Police Department, who's ever in charge of the noise, we've been discussing that issue, that decibel machine?
I'm sure, I guess.
Yeah, can we ask to get some information on what they, we'll provide them what we want at the next meeting. They don't have to appear, but at least, I want the Board of Health involved in this issue at this point, and the police with that decibel machine that I've never seen in 35 years.
Make it a motion.
I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Motion made?
So moved.
And seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and motion referred to the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Clerk will read the next item on the agenda, which I think is number two.
I think it's six.
No, I'm only kidding.
You know, sponsored, Counselor John F. Haines, President order appointing Greg Harris as an auxiliary police officer.
Second.
Second favorable action. Any further discussion? Here are none. All in favor, signal if you're saying aye.
That's an order.
Roll call.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero? Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan. Counsel Matusky.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Polatano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli. Counsel Hanlon. Ten yeas, zero nays, present.
Ten yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order. Clerk will read item number eight on the agenda.
Item number eight, an order sponsored by Counsel John Hanlon, the present petition regarding a lodging house license at 336 Broadway.
Everything in order?
I believe, is that the one we gave 30 days?
You're right.
Could we have a report from our assistant city clerk on that?
Thirty days. So counselors, the last meeting, we discussed me going to, sorry, I'm Assistant City Clerk Sergio Canelio. So the last meeting, we discussed me going to inspect the property after last weekend today. Inspecting, I showed some photos to some of the counselors. Most of the repairs for the fence are done. They have one left at the end of the driveway. They have a whole section that they're waiting to come in. Currently, they have a board over the hole there, so no one falls in. They've also issued their name and phone number for all the residents in the area. They've posted it outside. They've put six cameras, and I made sure they were functional this morning. I had a meeting with Mr. Marley's manager. They've put them in place. They're also putting out their other location on Linden Street. They've done just about everything you've asked. I don't see any other residents or them here, so we're hoping that's a good thing, because now everyone knew about it, so hopefully that it's, the issues have passed. My recommendation is to just continue the license as is, if you would. We have about just over four months left on their license, and if there are any issues, I can always come back before you and let you know, because I will be constantly inspecting them now.
Yes, Counsel.
I would like to just thank our assistant city clerk Sergio Canelio for doing due diligence on this. I know that some residents in the area had concerns with this, and I know in committee there was a lot of questions, and I want to thank you, Mr. Canelio, for doing a job well done on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe in committee, we had recommended a 30-day license.
And this is, the 30 days is just upon us. It's a couple of days from now, 30 days, technically.
A couple of days from now, but you also said, and correct me if I'm wrong, they have four months left.
So a license is issued for a year. You don't issue six-month licenses. What you did was put a condition that in 30 days, we'd come back before us. But the license is always by law issued by a year, so the license ends January, excuse me, December 31st. So it's January 1st to December 31st, this license, this specific license. So it's issued for a year. Your condition was 30 days. I reported back. You can either keep coming up every 30 or 60 days, or you can allow the license to go as is, and I'm still going to go and inspect. And if we get any calls in the office, I will report back to the city council.
That was my question. If we approve the way it is now for the next four months, you're still going to go inspect and make sure that they're doing what they.
Absolutely. Monthly, I start a new rotation of all our licenses.
And if they don't, then I would prefer, please, if you could call me, and I would call for a special meeting, because I'm the chairperson of the license.
Absolutely. If it comes before the August 22nd meeting, I will definitely, otherwise, I'll refer to the president, and he can put it on the agenda if there's another issue. Is that okay?
Thank you.
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Assistant City Clerk. Thank you very much for all the effort on that.
You're welcome.
I do appreciate that. And you took the pictures and you showed me that. You'll recall, you were here at that meeting when we were talking to them. There were the cameras, there was the fence, there was talking to the residents with regards to other people's property, and there was the posting of the contact information. It sounds like they've done everything, and you're absolutely right. There isn't anyone here, so that leads me to believe that everything is going well. There is that one last section that they need to finish off with the fence. Did you have an opportunity to speak with them?
I spoke with the manager today. He made it seem like it would be in in the next few days. And again, I'll be out next Monday to inspect. I'm going to give them the week. And then if there's another issue or something gets postponed, obviously, I'll come back before you right away.
I appreciate it. So when you go back out there again, if that fence still isn't completed, if you could please impress upon them that the next time they come up for a full license, if we had to go through this kind of a step process, it's going to be a problem. So I do appreciate the follow-up on it.
I mentioned that today.
And given the fact that they have complied with a substantial amount of what we were requested, and there aren't residents here, because residents came here and said that fence isn't done, I'm more than happy to push this over till August. But based on your efforts and the assurance that you received, if my colleagues are so inclined, let it go, and then if it turns out they don't do the fence, we'll bring them back up.
And that's your authority, and you can, you can.
I do appreciate anything you did. Thank you so much.
Absolutely, Counselors. Thank you very much.
Any further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'll accept the motion for favorable action.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action. Clerk called, roll.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan. Counsel Matusky.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
None.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays. Ten yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order, went to the petition. Clerk will read item number.
I'm sorry, nine yeas, one nay.
Nine yeas, one nay, you still passed the resolution. Clerk will read item number 10.
Item number 10 is a resolution regarding lighting and cameras on the bike path. Be resolved by the city council of the city of Everett Falls. City council respectfully requests that administration determine the cost of adding both lighting and cameras along the bike path to increase public safety and easier access for public use. Be it further resolved, the city council respectfully requests the added displaying the frequency with which this area is monitored in the evening by the Everett Police Department.
We have a committee report on that. This is all business, right?
Yeah, the last committee report I have is June 9th.
Yeah. Michael.
Oh, yeah, that's the last one I have.
Did they read it?
Oh, you want to read it, Chuck?
No, 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 no one has read it. On the motion, I mean, on the order, anybody? Counsel. McGlaughlin.
Could we ask, I don't really have, I don't want to put Mr. O'Donnell on the spot to be truthful, but if he has any information on this, if he doesn't, it's okay for tonight. But I know that the mayor had promised that he would put a piece before us to grant some money this summer to be able to put the cameras and lights in down at the bike path. And unfortunately, we haven't seen that come before us. I don't know if Mr. O'Donnell can talk on that briefly, make a motion to invite Mr. O'Donnell up. That's okay. And Mr. Demus. Hold on.
Excuse me. Well, there was a motion made and seconded to invite these gentlemen before us. Motion made and seconded to invite them before us. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? So the items before us. Gentlemen, please identify yourselves.
Kevin O'Donnell, Chief of Staff.
Happy birthday.
Eric Demus, CFO.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, briefly on this item, when speaking with the mayor, he, I knew, I know that it is a part of the capital improvement plan, but he said that he would put a piece before the council to expedite the process and to get the money available so that we could put lights and cameras down there, so that residents can utilize the walk 24 hours a day, especially at nighttime. It's a pretty desolate area, and we've had problems down there in the past, and I know some recent issues as well during the summer. I would really like to see that we can try to do something to, if not cameras just lighting the area up a little bit to bring some more light to that area. I mean, I enjoy walking the bike path, but it is a desolate area at nighttime.
Yes, and the mayor is all for these improvements, and we already have $500,000 earmarked for that, and we're in the process of working with Tony Souza on putting together a bid package and getting specs and things of that nature. So it is a process that is moving forward as we speak.
That's great. And I only ask that because I know that we had a meeting with Mr. O'Donnell down at the Madeline English School, we got on Safe Streets Initiative, and they were talking about possibility of trying to wrap this into that at the same time, into both, at the same time down at the bike path that day we were met at the school. But I would like to try to see some lights being put down there, because it is a pretty isolated area, and people would like to utilize it more in the evening after dinner and so forth, but it is a pretty difficult place to utilize as it stands today. So I appreciate the fact that the mayor is committed to, through Mr. Demus, pushing the, moving the, you know, the football down the field and working with us and trying to make this happen. So thank you.
No, he absolutely is. We want to see everybody be able to benefit from that, from a safety and, a safety standpoint, and also to get more use out of it.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. I yield the floor to my colleagues.
Any further discussion? Thank you, gentlemen, thank you very much.
I'm going to lay this item over for 60 days, the second meeting in September. Ask for the mayor to come up here before us to give us an update of where he believes this stands and how far away we are from being able to do this. So I lay this over for the second meeting of September and invite up Mayor Di Maria. Thank you.
Motion was for the mayor to appear at the second meeting in September with an update on the project. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? So moved. Refer it to his honor, the mayor. 10, 11, 12? 12. Item number 12 on the agenda, please.
Item number 12, resolution be resolved by, sponsored by Counsel Anthony DePiero, be resolved by the city council of Everett, as follows. Administration consider equipping every municipal building with Narcan. Be it further resolved, that it be considered to supply every school and community nearest with Narcan.
Counsel DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to refer this to Ms. Elaine Silver of the Health Department for an update at our August meeting.
Okay.
And within that update, the cost of the Narcan, and I believe the price has changed recently, so if possible, the before and after price.
Well, we know what the price is, I think.
They don't.
Yeah, it's jumped.
She could include the prior cost if it's in her knowledge.
Motion referred to the Health Department with a request to find out exactly what the cost of Narcan is, and refer it back to us in the second meeting, I mean, our August meeting. Refer back in our August meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Clerk will read. 15. 13. 15. 14, 15. 15, item 15.
Item number 15, ordinance sponsored by Counsel John F. Hanlon, an ordinance regulating drop-off containers.
Fable action.
Second. Motion made, seconded for favorable action, any further discussion under the motion? Counsel McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, I'm sorry. Are you going to create an ordinance regarding containers?
Do we need it?
There actually is one. I wrote one.
Yeah, it's here. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's here.
Got it in the mail on the pack, no?
Quite an ordinance.
Did you see that on the one?
I apologize. My concern is, I got a couple of phone calls today, and it's at the bottom of Counsel DePiero Street, actually. The container that's in the Pizza Hut parking lot at the bottom of Sycamore Street is causing a real nuisance to that neighborhood there. There's a box for clothes, but the clothes are thrown all over the parking lot, and it's really unsightly seen. So that's why I asked the question tonight, because I did get some phone calls on this, just happened to be today, and I seen this before us tonight. Thank you.
That's covered in here, so that we'd be able to call them.
Okay, I apologize that I didn't get a chance to read that. I will tomorrow. Thank you.
If they don't respond, they get fined. So anyway, Counsel DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as a side note, today, when I was coming down my hill on Sycamore Street, I just wanted to compliment the ISD department, because there was a vehicle there, and they were already on top of it before I could even make a phone call. So hats off to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion was made for favorable action. Clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Matusky.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays.
Ten yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order. Clerk will read item number 16.
Yes.
Item number 16 is an ordinance regulating can collectors.
Fable. We also have an ordinance on this. That was written up. It's not as long as the other one.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action.
Roll call.
Any further discussion? Clerk called, roll. Oh, yes, Counsel McGlaughlin.
What is the difference? What are we doing with the ordinance that is before us tonight? What is the?
We never had one.
I'm sorry? We never had one on the books previously?
Let me, if you'd like, I could, I could read it. It's not as long as the others, as the, like, the drop-off one.
Okay, if you.
It says that Chapter 16 dash 113 is, Chapter 16 is amended by adding Section 113. Collectors of redeemable containers of beverages shall be permitted by the city clerk's office and pay a fee established by the city clerk. Collector shall have said permit available for inspection while performing said task. Collector shall remove no other recyclable items such as metals, products made of recyclable material, or other items for the purpose of resale without first securing a junk collector's license. Collector shall follow such rules and regulations as set forth by Inspection Services Department. This ordinance shall take effect upon passage by the city council and approval by his honor of the mayor.
Counsel, Counsel Polatano.
Okay, just kind of curious, when this gets approved, I've seen the people that are out there collecting cans, you know, a lot of them are, you know, don't speak English. I mean, and I'm not trying to say that's the case, but how are we going to implement I mean, and I'm not trying to say that's the case, but how are we gonna implement this? Who's gonna enforce it initially to let these people know if they don't read it in the paper? If they even get their hands on their paper?
It'll be ISD. They're gonna set the rules and regulations, and following their procedure, the first time with any violation should be a warning. Hey, here it is, this is what you have to do, you have to make sure you put everything back. The reason that they're setting the rules and regulations is because they're the ones who deal with it the most. They're the ones who get the calls. So, I think whatever they see, they should come up with the rules and regulations that say, this is how we want you to handle the trash, we want you to, if you're gonna do this type of thing. And we're separating them from junk collectors, saying, we don't want, if you're out there collecting copper and everything else out of the brown, you're a junk collector, you deserve to get paid at seventy-five dollars, which should be higher, but to have a junk collector's license, so. These beverage containers are nothing, you know, or get a junk collector's license.
I mean, Mike, I mean, it's valid, I mean, I have no issue with it. My big concern is the, I'm thinking of the one or two people I see in my neighborhood who speak no English, that a coenforcement representative's gonna walk up to try to explain this, there's gonna be right out of the gate a language barrier. I'm just concerned that this could create-
We'll step forward after that and try to find some way to communicate it with them. You know, all we're really asking them to do is be neat.
Yeah.
You know, and not be disruptive.
And I have no problem with that, I mean, I pick up a lot of junk from people that pulls them out of my barrels as well, like everybody else in the city, so I understand that.
So, we'll find a way to get that communicated to them.
I just don't wanna make those people feel isolated because they don't understand what it is we're trying to do.
No problem with that, that's point well taken.
Motion made, second, favorable action. Any further discussion? Clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Capone.
Yes.
Councilor Del Osola.
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Councilor DePiero. Councilor Matusky.
Yes.
Councilor McKennan.
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Napolitano.
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli.
None.
Councilor Hanlon.
Yes.
Eight yeas, one name, Mr. President.
Yeah, pass the ordinance.
Enrolled, yeah.
Clerk will read item seventeen.
Okay, item number seventeen is an ordinance clarifying vacant and foreclosed registration ordinance.
Fable action.
Second motion.
Motion made, second, favorable action. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Can I?
Clerk will call the roll.
Yeah.
I mean, all due respect, Mr. President, I'm just kinda curious about this. We've just passed, or we've just reviewed five ordinances, or four ordinance changes. I chair Legislative Affairs, how is it that none of these are coming through my committee? For my colleagues to review, just in case in the event that we, in view of our job, tweak these ordinances? I mean, I just wanna ask that, put that question out there. Generally, Legislative Affairs, it's like the old Rules and Ordinance Committee was one of the most active committees. We've met twice this year, and we've made changes to ordinances, so I'm just kinda concerned as to, are we inadvertently bypassing our rules by just pushing these ordinances through, as opposed to sending them to committee to where the work is supposed to be done? So, I'm not expecting an answer, I just wanna make that statement.
Well, just make a motion to refer it to the committee.
I just wanna, I just wanna know to be able to do what we're supposed to be doing.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
I also wholeheartedly agree with Councilor Napolitano, right? So, you get a package at your house on Saturday afternoon, a heavily thick package. You're supposed to review it from Saturday afternoon until today, and we're going to sit up here and pass five or six ordinance changes without sending anything to committee and discussing it, good, bad, or indifferent. I do find it a little odd that that's occurring, and I think that we need to slow the train down a little bit to understand what these things are. Baconed foreclosed registration ordinance, what does that really mean to anybody, to be very honest? I didn't have time to read a packet of a hundred pages, unfortunately, over the weekend. So, to send this stuff to committee, and to at least hear and out, good, bad, or indifferent, and send it back to the floor for a vote, up or down, I think is due diligence. Voting for ordinances, the way they're written on this calendar tonight, I think is doing a disservice to not only the residents at home, but us as councillors, because we don't now understand fully the ordinances that are in place. We don't understand the changes that we made. I'll be very honest, we've made several changes tonight. Drop-off containers, the ordinance for drop-off containers, that tells me a lot. Tells me nothing, to be very honest with you. These things need to go to committee, we need to slow the train down a little bit and do our due diligence as city councillors, to be able to do the homework for the residents that are at home and for ourselves. I'm a little disappointed in seeing these tonight passed the way they are.
Councilor DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, we did get the package late, and I understand that, but the ordinances are written very well, and you can understand them if you do read the ordinance. The other thing is, you have two weeks to read the ordinance, because right now, you're voting on it, but you could change your mind in two weeks. Right?
So, Mr. President, you're gonna read the ordinance-
It doesn't matter, you still have two weeks from now. In two weeks, if you don't like what the ordinance says-
Well, our next meeting.
Right, our next meeting. A month, actually, I'm sorry. So, if by our next meeting, if you don't like what this ordinance says, or you wanna change something, you still have the ability to do it, and you still have the ability to send it to committee.
So, you want me to go home and read ordinances and, what, talk to myself about them, or who do we talk to over the next month about the ordinances?
No cross debating on the floor, please address questions to me.
Okay, I'll address the question to you.
Mr. Chairman, we have a month to read the ordinances. When we come to our next meeting, if you have any questions, you have the right to ask the questions. If something is not clear, and you don't see it being clear, then you send it to committee. We're not just passing everything right away here. I, you know, we're letting people understand that, we're just passing this. We have a month to go over all this. So, why send something to committee? We did get the package on Saturday, but we still have a whole month to read it. Why send something to committee if something is clear? If we come up with the questions, we'll come up with the questions a month from now. This isn't being passed tonight. This is not a final pass.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Again, so, we're gonna go home, read the packet, talk to ourselves about the ordinances, and a month from now, we're gonna come up, ask questions, send it to committee, and delay it for another thirty to sixty days. That's what we're doing in hindsight. Why not just send it to committee tonight, speed the process up, have a committee meeting, do our due diligence as city councillors for the people that we're representing, and do what's right? It's a pretty simple process, that's what's been in place longer than I've been alive. I don't understand why we're circumventing the process.
Okay, Councilor Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to refer item seventeen to the Legislative Affairs Committee. I don't know anything really about it, the full extent of what this is about, but I will say this, Mr. President, I've had committee meetings three or four times every month on top of regular council meetings, I mean, I'm, you know, not for nothing. For those who haven't had committee meetings, well, I'm sorry to hear that, but I'm up here quite a bit, and maybe I'm on the right committees, but I will refer item seventeen to, I'd like to refer this item, as Councilor Napolitano stated, he doesn't have too much information on it, so let's send it to Legislative Affairs Committee and try and know what it's all about.
Councilor Napolitano. Okay, Councilor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say that I, we did get them late, I read them all, I understand them all. This is, but if individuals wanna refer things, I'm happy to do that, I don't want anyone voting on anything that they don't, but I don't want anybody saying that we're not doing our job either, because I'm doing my job, and I'm sure my colleagues are doing their job. I am more than happy to support the motion to refer it to committee, but I just wanna make sure that the people watching at home know that even though we got this late, I'm reading things, and I'm sure others are too. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor McKennan.
I'm all set, thanks.
You're all set?
Thank you.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Again, on a Saturday night when you come home, you get a packet, that thick that's on Councilor DeFlorio's desk, right? I apologize to my good colleagues that I unfortunately didn't have the time on Sunday to read every single page in that thick packet. I didn't, to be very truthful. Doesn't mean that I'm not doing my homework, or the good Councilor from Ward One's not doing his homework, because we all know he does his job as a councillor. The fact of the matter is, we need to slow the train down a little bit. Some people have this thought of, if we have to go to committee, we're gonna be up here more often. It's sort of what we're elected to do, to do the job of the people, to come to meetings and to participate in the process. If, and I apologize to be harsh on this, but again, we passed three ordinances previously, changes, that I still, tonight, don't understand. Maybe I will when I go home tomorrow and have an opportunity to read it, but why not just have a committee meeting and be able to discuss it with my colleagues and move forward?
Peter Napolitano. Councilor Napolitano.
First of all, Mr. President, I want to apologize to you if I gave anybody the impression that I was dissatisfied with the quality of these ordinances, or that we're, or that I felt that my committee was being bypassed. It's just that when you see this much activity, and you're involved in a committee that you anticipate being able to do this kind of work, it raises a question. And again, I apologize, I was, I am in no way suggesting that, you know, that we're doing, that we're doing the public a disservice, but I do want to be, as I was on this committee, be more involved in the structuring of these ordinances, because that's what I signed on for. So, that's, in the future, I just would like to be able to see things routed through so we have a little more hands-on, because it also does get other members participating in the process, which is good for all of us. That's what we're here for, we're here for the betterment of the public. So, I was not, and I'm saying so to the public, I was not suggesting in any way, shape, or form that we've been doing the public a disservice. I just would like to see us approach this in a different manner, the way our rules stayed. Thank you.
Councilor McKennan.
He just answered all my questions. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Peter.
Now, the motion made, second, refer to Legislative Affairs. Any further discussion?
Oh, my God.
Please signify if you wish it by favorable action or not. Pass. Okay, refer it to committee on Legislative Affairs. We did seventeen, didn't we?
Eighteen. Yeah.
Eighteen.
Was referred out to committee, I think.
Item number eighteen, a resolution regarding the hiring of a full-time clinician for the city of Everett. Be it resolved by the city council, city of Everett. Yes, pass, I wanna come in.
Favorable action, we refer to Legislative Affairs. Did anybody vote on it?
Yeah.
We did, we did.
Yes, you did.
There was no vote?
Oh, take a vote.
Signify by saying aye on seventeen, if you want to refer to Legislative Affairs.
Aye.
All opposed? Refer to Legislative Affairs. Clerk will read item eighteen.
Item number eighteen, resolution regarding the hiring of a full-time clinician for the city of Everett. It's just the agenda, this is the resolution. Be it resolved by the city council, the city of Everett, as follows. City council hereby respectfully requests that the administration seriously considers the employee of a full-time clinician for the purpose of following up on education management and direct contact with survivors of overdoses in their family. Shall be responsible of the clinician to communicate with the person and person of interest and family members to ensure proper utilization of available resources.
Councilor McKennan.
At this time, I received information from our chief, basically, it was the, everyone should have a copy as well, they disseminated the copies to you. It's also the monthly reports from January one to June thirtieth, there were sixty-one overdoses, and subsequent, out of those sixty-one, there was five deaths, so those are the numbers right now. That's why I'm strongly suggesting that the mayor look into this and actually report back favorable on this, so that we can actually have this type of person responding out to these ODs that are actually happening on our streets now, whether they go with, and formulate the mechanism to which we're going to utilize them, whether they be in the police or the fire units, but they have to respond with one of those. They utilize this on the Middlesex County DA's task force now, the surrounding communities have the clinicians that are in them, they've been there for almost, some communities have them for seven years now, so we're way behind times now on this item. So, I believe and I feel strongly that we need to do this, and if we don't, we'll just run into more problems that we've been running into. So, I'd like to refer this to the mayor with a written response back at our next meeting on whether or not we are going to seek this position to fill it.
Second motion.
Motion made, second, to his further, your honor, the mayor, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose, you have referred to his honor, the mayor, with a request for a per packet at our next meeting. Clerk will read item number twenty.
Item number twenty is a resolution regarding the street grade system and location of Ashton and Cumberland Streets therein. Be it resolved by the city council, city of Everett, as follows. The city council respectfully requests the city engineer and director of public works appear at the next meeting to discuss the street grade system where Ashton and Columbus and Cumberland Street are on the list. Be it further resolved that the city council respectfully requests that a copy of the street grade list be available at the meeting, and the copies be provided to all council members.
Everyone should have received a copy of the grading system, that's the older version of it. There is gonna be a new version coming out, we will also be receiving copies of that as well. The grading system, as you know, will tell you what street's priority, what streets are not, and if they're in your ward, then you can actually be looking at trying to, by grade, get those streets done, so that, I think, may come in handy to everyone here as well, as I'd like to invite Mr. Bill O'Rourke to our next meeting to give me the answer on Ashton Street and Cumberland Street. This piece has been on two to three times for this, so I'm requesting him to appear at the next meeting with the answer on Ashton Street and also Cumberland.
Second motion.
Motion made, second, to refer this subject matter to Bill O'Rourke, our city engineer, for an answer by the next meeting, the last meeting, and whatever, the next meeting in August. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so move. Twenty-one? Do we did two, anyone, didn't we? Twenty-two, twenty-three? Twenty-three.
Oh, twenty-one.
We did twenty-one?
Item number two, I got it right here, too. Item twenty-one, resolution requests that ECTV run a PSA regarding the cost college tuition proof of private health insurance be resolved by the city council, city of Everett, as follows. City council respectfully requests that ECTV run a public service announcement for parents of college students informing them of reductions in tuition expense if they provide proof of private health insurance coverage.
Councilor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anyone who has kids or themselves are going past high school, if you don't pay attention, they automatically bill for health insurance coverage. So, the purpose of this piece is to run a public service announcement through ECTV to alert students and parents or guardians of students that if they already do have health insurance coverage, they need to notify their school before they start classes, otherwise they're gonna be charged for an automatic insurance policy, so they're gonna be paying for it twice. So, I just wanna make sure that people are paying attention to that, because a couple of friends I have who are very sharp people missed the boat on that one, and they end up paying twice, so I just wanna make sure we do that, so I'd like to refer it to ECTV.
Motion made, second, refer this subject matter to ECTV for a PSA announcement, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so move. You have moved. Clerk will read item twenty-one.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-three.
Item number twenty-three is a resolution sponsored by Councilor Matusky, a resolution regarding places to speed radar monitoring the area of Fuller Street. Be it resolved by the city council, city of Everett, as follows. The city council hereby respectfully requests that the police traffic department consider placing speed radar monitoring the area of Fuller Street neighborhood due to numerous complaints.
Okay, Councilor Matusky. Motion made, second, not a second? Motion made, second, refer to traffic? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, you have referred to traffic. Read item number...
Twenty-four.
We did twenty-four, right?
No.
We didn't, we took it about the rats.
Item number twenty-four, resolution sponsored by Councilor Napolitano and Councilor Capone, resolution regarding complaints roding around Florence Street Park be resolved by the city council, city of Everett, as follows. That the city council hereby respectfully requests the director of planning and community development and a representative of the mayor's office appear to discuss complaints by the residents of budding Florence Street Park of roding activity during the park's reconstruction.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Napolitano.
Yes. I've been getting a series of complaints for a few weeks now, actually, almost a month, regarding rodents, mice, rats, things coming out of Florence Street Park. What's happening right now is, obviously, you know, we run into this whenever we're dealing with major construction, it disrupts the burrows and the various places where these animals live, and it pushes them out. What's been happening is that while the trees are all sitting there to be installed down in Florence Street Park, they're being watered every night. That's flooding out where a lot of these creatures live in the ground, it's pushing them out of the park. People are finding them in their basements, in their living rooms. It's getting to be pretty bad. I've talked to a few residents in that, on Florence Street, who have already had to pay twice for bringing exterminator in. We need to look at this, somehow this possibility got missed. So, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to send this to Gov. Ops and Public Safety, invite a member from the mayor's office, director of community development, somebody from the Health Department, and I know that I'll get the word out to the neighbors, and they plan to be here so they can voice their concerns. Perhaps the city can find some way to give them some kind of relief, okay? But right now, the problem down there is getting pretty bad, and the fact is that technically the park, we thought the park was gonna be done last year, and it still isn't done yet, and though I'm sure it'll be done by the fall, it's a hard time, it's a hard believing that when you drive by and see the way it's laid out, so that's what I would recommend, I would just motion to send this to committee.
Motion to refer to the mayor, community development, and the Health Department. Councilor McKennan.
I think the motion was for committee as well, and invite them.
Yes.
To the committee meeting.
Yeah, that was the one.
I got it. I just wanna say that this has been in committee before, but these are all new developments down there. I know that we reported out, we had some type of reports from Florence Street as well, but there was also reports on other portions of the city, that's why number twenty-six and twenty-seven, if you look at those, those will explain what we've done out of committee, so, but I concur with my colleague on this.
Councilor Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. I too have received phone calls regarding the dysfunctioning. I, you know, everybody's waiting for Florence Street Park to actually be completed. And, you know, some of these contractors, isn't there a responsibility at some point to put, to anticipate these problems?
If it's, if it's in the contract, yes.
If it's in the contract, but sometimes it's not. But in the old days, Mr. Redmond was the Board of Health Director. He would actually have rat poison and poison in these waxy, he'd open up his safe and, you know, I can't, I mean, I'm going back a few years, but, I mean, wouldn't it be possible for the Board of Health to go down there, or the ISD Department, and throw some of that waxy rat poison out there? I mean, you know, somebody should be in charge of these things. They do it in other cities. In Boston, you hear about it. Now they're using, what do they call it, that hot ice, what's the term on it? Dry ice. It's a new, they figured out dry ice kills the rats better than anything else they thought of. But anyway, I have received, it's a serious complaint, and I just was curious that some contractors should be taking care of these problems as the project moves forward. But, okay, I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Peter, Counselor Napolitano.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, looking at some of the projects we've been involved in the past, Bat Yard, before the initial construction started down there, part of the agreement was, an exterminator went in, evaluated the property, work was done, exterminator went back and reevaluated the aid of the property. And that way, they could establish a benchmark to whether or not the tenant, the resident had previous rodent problems, and is just using this as a way to get it cleaned up, or, you know, what's happening after the fact. And this is one of these things I think we should be looking at when we do these big parks, okay? Because it's not just our kids that use them. We like to think of that, but we don't like to think about what lives under the ground or under the bushes. You know, they were here, these animals were here before us. It's just, it's just the way it is. But we need to establish some way to make sure that we don't have any overflow, and that's what's happening down in that neighborhood.
Okay. Motion to refer to committee, invite mayor, community development, and the Health Department. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so moved. You have referred to the committee. Clerk, read item twenty-five.
Item number twenty-five. Is a resolution sponsored by Councilor Peter Napolitano, resolution regarding reverse PSA calls after eight p.m. Be it resolved, the City Council respectfully requests the City of Everett consider not scheduling public service announcement phone calls after eight p.m., with the obvious exception of those pertaining to public safety issues.
A couple of weeks ago, you know, a large number of the city got these robo-calls between nine and nine-thirty regarding the farmer's market down Glendale, Glendale Park. Now, great program, not knocking it. I understand they gave bikes away. Again, you definitely want a good turnout for something like that. But at nine-thirty at night, if your phone goes up and call, I D.C. City of Everett, your first thought is not, you know, especially in this day and age where we're seeing all this stuff that's happening around the country, you know, in Orlando, and, you know, and other parts, you know, when you see a notice like that up, your first thought is not, is not benevolent. You're thinking there's a problem. I think there needs to be a point where the city stops any public service announcements and not continue a call later in the evening. And I'd like to explore that in committee by possibly making a change, by creating an ordinance. So I'd like to refer this to Legislative Affairs, so we can kind of take a look at what's on the books, if anything, and put something in there.
Second motion. Motion made in second, refer to Legislative Affairs. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so moved. Refer to Legislative Affairs. Clerk, read item number twenty-six.
Item number twenty-six, an ordinance sponsored by Councilor John Lee McKinnon, McKinnon, an ordinance regulating rodent control. Rather lengthy one, if you'd like me to read it.
Go right here. On this ordinance, this is a result of being in committee for probably three different discussions in committee. This came out after we sat down with, and received different ordinances from different other cities, Boston to be one, Lowell. There was also, I believe, the state of North Carolina. We had sat down with the clerk to help devise this as well, so I want to give him kudos there for putting this together with us. And when we, when we put this out, it will actually cure some of the conversation we had on twenty-four as like Florence Street Park or any new development, because if there is any mention of earth moving, they have to bait, according to our new ordinance now. Any development or any digging or any movement of the earth, they will bait. Any old vacant buildings, any building destruction, they will bait. So this is a, it's a, it's a great ordinance that came out, and I applaud the committee for doing such a good job and putting it together. So I ask for favorable action on this.
Shouldn't have been, should have been in part of it.
Motion made in second for what?
Favorable action.
Motion for favorable action, item number, all in favor?
Roll call.
Is it a roll call?
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Del Sollo.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DiPiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan. Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Hanlon.
Yes. Did you?
Tenays zero nays, Mr. President.
Yes, zero nays, you have an ordained.
Enrolled.
Enrolled.
It's a good one. It's been in committee for three months.
Twenty-seven?
Item number twenty-seven, an ordinance adding rodent control to dumpster permitting. Section seven, be it ordained by the City Council, as follows. Section seventy-one of Chapter sixteen revise ordinance, the City of Everett hereby amended. By striking out section seventy-eight and inserting therein a new section seventy-eight, as follows. Maintenance notification of all violations shall be the responsibility of the owner, as defined in sixteen dash seventy-one, to maintain the dumpster area free of odors, scattered debris, overflowing, and all other nuisances. Clean and disinfect, clean and disinfect said containers as needed with a minimum of three times a year, April thirtieth, July thirtieth, October thirtieth. Geodeurize dumpster when emptied or as directed by order of the Board of Health. Maintain covers and gates in proper working order. Bait around perimeter dumpster if required by Board of Health. Submit a maintenance plan for said dumpsters to the Health Department with said permit. Make maintenance records ready, available for review by inspectors. Be an owner notified of a violation of any foregoing offense that shall be within, shall within twelve hours of notification cause the offense to be remedied or be in violation of this chapter. Be it furthered deemed that section eighty-four of Chapter sixteen is hereby deleted in its entirety. This ordinance shall take effect upon passage by the City Council and subsequent approval by his order to the mayor.
Mr. President. Counselor McKinnon.
Yeah, this is equally an ordinance that was in as long as the last ordinance in the Committee of Government Operations, Public Safety. So I ask for favorable action on this, and this was worked with the whole committee three different times, and then also ISD, Frank Nozo, and also the clerk.
Motion made in second for favorable action. Any further discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Del Sollo.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DiPiero.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Hey.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Tenays zero nays.
Tenays zero nays, you have enrolled. We're on thirty, aren't we?
My God, I hope so.
We did twenty-nine, we did twenty-eight. We've got to be on thirty.
Item number thirty is, an ordinance amending zoning along Commercial Triangle Revere Beach Parkway. Be it ordained by the City Council, City Council, by the City of Everett, as follows, that in accordance with the provisions of Section twelve of the zoning ordinance of the City of Everett, City Council hereby amends Appendix A zoning as follows. That in Section twenty, the business limited district being extended to the industrial limited district. Be it furthered deemed that in Section twenty, the business limited district being extended to certain zoning districts along the north side of the Revere Beach Parkway. Be it furthered deemed that in Section four, the dwelling district being extended to the business district and industrial limited district along Paris Street, is shown on a map prepared by the Department of Planning and Development to propose zoning changes Commercial Triangle and Revere Beach Parkway.
Refer to the planning board.
Hold on.
Motion to refer to planning board.
Yeah, how many people said that?
Second.
Motion made in second, refer to the planning board. Any further discussion? Hearing done? All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved. Refer to the planning.
Before we adjourn, Mr. President, I'd like to wish Councilman Capone a belated happy birthday. How old are you now, counsel?
Twenty-four.
I'm twelve.
Twenty-one again.
Motion for adjournment.
Motion made in second.
Happy belated birthday, counsel.
All in favor, Chairman?
Aye.
Aye.